Thank you. I want to welcome you all to the December 13th meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm going to be serving as chairman of tonight's meeting. I want to make a few quick introductions. We've Gunnar Hand, Director of the Land Use and Urban Planning Department with us, along with Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. Also Byron Toy with the Planning Department Staff and Patrick Waters for the Unified Government Legal Council. We also have the following commissioners present tonight. We have Commissioner Joanne Huey, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Jake Miller, and Commissioner Karen Jones. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Janet Parker, who will read the opening statement on how we're going to handle tonight's meeting. Thank you, Janet.
We would like to welcome those participating by telephone or Zoom to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Board members use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak, and after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse or if you need a break, use the raise your hand feature. For those attending the meeting this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@wycockzk.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly may be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them by Chairman Carson. The staff will make their recommendation. The board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motion to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Our first application is BOZA 2021-031, Nicholas Arcos, for property at 4041 South Mini Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Arcos, are you in the audience? If you would, please raise your hand so I can recognize you. Okay, I've got Anna Arcos Serrano. Go ahead. I've got you unmuted if you want to, or excuse me, got you queued up to speak. If you want to go ahead and give us your name, please, and address, and tell us about your project.
Hi, so I am Anna Arcos. I'm representing my dad since my dad doesn't speak any English.
Okay.
So our address is 4041 South Mini Street, Kansas City, Kansas, 66103. Our project really isn't a project. So earlier, when we first got the house, which was about seven to eight years ago, we had gone to the urban and planning site on State Avenue to ask about the fence before we even built it up. And to make it short, pretty much we asked about what were the restrictions on the fence height. And pretty much what they told us was that if it was in front of the house, it had to be at four feet, but anywhere else, it didn't matter. Like, there was like a six-feet minimum or maximum, I think. And there was a little bit of misunderstanding. So what we thought was the front of the house was at four feet. But in our case, we built the fence a little bit taller than four feet on the side of the house. And so we had built the fence in regards to what we understood was the restriction. And then, you know, just a couple months ago, we got a notice violation saying that we had violated the the fence height.
Okay, so you're here tonight to ask for a variance of that fence size, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how long has that fence been up?
It's been up since we got the house, and I believe we got the house in 2014 going into 2015. So it's been up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Anyone in the audience tonight want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close the public portion of the meeting and we'll go to staff and get their comments.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, before you tonight, this agenda item is two variances, one for height. Required fences, four feet, as the applicant mentioned. It's mostly four, but includes six at some locations. It also does not meet the transparency requirement. A fence in the front yard has to be 40% transparent. It's almost completely opaque. We estimated it 90%, although we didn't do the exact diagram based on the elevation submitted by the applicant. So that is a guesstimate. It's probably somewhere between 90 and 98% if I were to guess when you look at the pictures. This is in the Rosedale area master plan on a block just around the corner. So about a mid-block. This is a picture of some of the some of the fence currently. There are a couple old NOBs on the property. We received no letters of support, no opposition, because this is a self-imposed hardship, i.e. they're asking for forgiveness tonight, not permission. As per our protocol, staff has recommended denial. If the Board of Zoning Appeals wants to move forward with approval, we recommend that you pick one of the with approval, we recommend you pick one of the variances. So if you want to keep the height, we'd ask that you change the trend, you not approve the transparency. If you want to pick the transparency, i.e. it's completely enclosed, then we would ask them to reduce the height. In terms of constructability, it would probably be best for the applicant if you gave a variance, if you were to give a variance, that you gave it for the height, allow the height of the fence to be maintained, but essentially ask for transparency, which would effectively require them to essentially pull a piece of fence, pick it, every other pick it off. So you would just go down the line and take every other post off, essentially. And with that, staff can take any questions. Again, we recommend denial, but we do have a qualification if you do want to move forward with approval.
Any questions for staff on this? I am seeing no questions. Oh, excuse me, there we go. Commissioner Jones.
So Gunnar, what can you say again? I think I might have missed it. What kind of communication you or your office had with the petitioner?
I'm not sure if Planning Department had any. I believe the applicant went to the NRC and asked about it. We have a standard handout that we give for front yard fences that basically says you have to be four feet or less. It does note transparency, and it does specifically call out the site distance triangle. Again, this isn't on a corner lot, so that's not an issue for the location of this fence. So again, the NRC is sometimes Planning Staff, but it's mostly Neighborhood Resource Center staff. This came to us on a notice violation.
Okay, so would it be correct statement, you think that the petitioner misunderstanding what the requirement is and how to apply them to just they misread the information with that?
That's what it sounds like, yes, Commissioner.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when someone's ready. Anyone? Or any questions? Commissioner Muller.
Sorry, I was having issues. Gunnar, so all fences have to have this 40% requirement?
In the front yard, yes.
In the front yard?
Yep, you can enclose your backyard however you want. I mean, I think it's, I don't believe it was noted by the applicant, but they do have a rear, an enclosed rear yard via fence.
And so, and so this issue is dealing with simply the front section of the fence, or the fence in the front yard?
Correct.
And Gunnar, can I ask for a clarification? I'm sorry, Commissioner Muller. If, if there was going to be a motion regarding transparency or height, would it just be across the front fence line, or would there be any, anything on the sides that come up to the front?
No, front yard is defined as anything in front of the building face, depending what direction that is. So the front of your house towards the street is the front yard. So anything behind that line can be six feet and fully enclosed. Anything in front of that has to be four feet.
So even on the sides, it would have to also provide a transparency from the front corner of the house to the, to the front?
Yes, if it framed in the sides of your front yard, that is still the front yard fence.
Okay, thank you. Just one other clarification. I'm sorry, Commissioner Muller, if I interrupted you.
No, you're fine.
With the, with those comments, is there now a motion? Commissioner Jones?
I feel bad on having to do this, but based on what I've heard, and we need consistency of the application of the ordinance. So I am making a motion to deny the petitioner's request based on it's in violation of the ordinance.
Okay, motion is for denial based that it does not comply with the ordinance that's already established. Is there a second for the motion for denial? Okay, no seconds, so that motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Muller.
I would make a motion to reduce the size of the fence as opposed to the density.
Okay, so your motion is to lower the fence height to the required minimum required by the code?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Okay, been moved for approval, subject to the subject to the code by Commissioner Muller and seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, at the point of there.
Yes.
So to require the fence to be four feet, we would deny variance number one, but approve variance number two. Is that how I understand the motion, Mr. Muller?
Yes.
So you're cool with it being less than, more than 40%? Less than 40% open? So 0% open essentially, but you want them to reduce the height by two feet?
Correct. Is everybody clear? So it would be from the front of the house forward, on the sides, and across the front. It would be lowered to the, to the maximum height allowed by the code. But the transparency would remain the same. Okay, any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, the motion is to deny variance one and to approve variance two.
That is correct.
Miller? Muller?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Huey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes five in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you.
Our next application is BOZA 2021-032, Will Anderson with BHC Roads for property at 5621 and 5701 North 107th Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, I think I saw you in the audience. There we go. Please go ahead and give us your name and address. Tell us about this project.
G'day, Will Anderson with BHC, address 712 State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. We're applying for a variance on the frontage-to-depth ratio. The issue is that these are two original lots from prior to the time where the frontage-to-depth ratio came into play. What's happened is there's a pond on one lot and an accessory building on the other lot. We've basically wanted to platter so the lot, the pond stays completely on one lot, and then the accessory building goes to the other lot. The boundary adjustments, if you like, equimatched, and so that's why the adjoining owners are comfortable with it. But because we're plating, having to plant because of that, then the frontage-to-depth ratio comes back into play, and that's what we're asking for a variance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, I've got Christina Long. Christina, if you go ahead and give us your name and address, please. Christina Long. Ms. Long, can you hear us? Ms. Long, can you hear us? One more time, Christina Long. I see your hand up, and you are unmuted. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. As the applicant mentioned, this is a this is associated with plat 2021024 that the City Planning Commission will hear later this evening. It is in the Prairie Delaware Piper master plan area. You can see, sorry, fuzzy aerial here. It's a straight line, and essentially, as, as described by the applicant, they're going to make that line move in a bunch of different directions. Again, a lot split can be done administratively if it's a straight line and divide something exactly into two pieces, rectilinear pieces. This kind of has a jigsaw, if you will. So it's plat, which brings up the variance as mentioned. Again, there's nothing out of the ordinary. These, these types of sized lots are unique to this area. It fits in the character. There's been, there were some old NOBs on the property, but nothing associated with this project. There's been no letters of support or opposition, although we've tried to hear somebody from the public just now, so I'm not sure which way they were going to go. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve, subject to stipulations and comments.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Armstrong, is that a second from you?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please, Janet.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Huey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions and comments in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you.
Our next application is BOZA 2021-033, Sherry Gayen with Friendship Inn at pro property at 4403 Rainbow Boulevard. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the office, or excuse me, in the there we go. Okay, I've got you queued up to speak. If you'd go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about this project.
Hello, Sherry Gayen. Okay, perfect. I represent Friendship Inn located at 4146 State Line Road. Thank you for having us this evening. I also have with me Scott and Don Roseman from Roseman Associates, the architects on the project, as well as Matt Slick from Engineering Solutions, civil engineer. I'd like to start off by giving a quick, brief background on Friendship Inn. Friendship Inn is a nonprofit organization. We were conceived in 2001. We offer, call a home away from home for patients and their families that are receiving treatment at the University of Kansas Health System. Our guests are typically those that are receiving what would be considered mostly long-term care. For example, like a organ transplant and have a need to be near the hospital for an extended period of time. This can prove to be very cost prohibitive to stay in a hotel for these families. Friendship Inn serves to solve that problem. A new Friendship Inn home has been a longtime goal for, for Friendship Inn. Our new house, as I mentioned, is, our old house, our existing house is currently located at 4146 State Line Road. We currently have four bedrooms and only one full bathroom. So as you can imagine, this has severely limited our ability to, to serve the community. With the onset of COVID, of course, that really made things even, even more dire, as with the one bathroom, we were only able to serve one family at a time. We actually now have a very, very generous donor who has felt very passionate about the project, which is, has allowed us to move, to move forward with this new, larger home located at 4403 Rainbow Boulevard. And so this would be in honor of his, of his late wife, and it would be Babe's place at Friendship Inn, and we're hoping that you all would help to make this a reality for us. I'll now turn this over to Roseman and Associates to discuss our variances that we are requesting at this time.
Thank you. Is that, okay, Mr. Roseman, I've got you ready to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Good morning, or evening. This is Don Roseman with Roseman Associates Architects, 1526 Grand Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri. I'd like to thank the board, and I'm going to give just a little brief background with regard to the, the variances that we're requesting. The first has to do with the, the particular site and the setbacks. And what we are, we are located on is a, is a multi-lot site that has some steep terrain that goes from the front along Rainbow Boulevard to the rear of the site. And so in order to make some accommodations to accommodate the parking in the rear in lieu of the front, and to provide setbacks that are approximately equal to the adjacent residential lots that are in the neighborhood, we placed the building after discussion with staff at a, at a point that is consistent with the, the setback of the adjacent properties. It is a violation because it is forward a little over six feet from what would be required based upon the zoning. We're providing 17 short-term parking spaces in the back of the, of the site in order to accommodate a space of one parking space for each of the unit suites inside the building. So therefore, at a one-to-one ratio for each of the units that are occupied inside the building. That is really associated with the, with the number of ratio of the parking spaces. The other thing is that the lot area, in terms of the site, we were attempting to secure an adjacent site, which we were unsuccessful because it's tied up in some litigation, and there's no defined timeframe upon which anything could happen there. So we are based upon the actual square foot per unit in excess. Although meeting with staff, we feel like this is consistent, and they are supportive of the other requests. Be happy to answer any other questions that any of the commissioners or the chairman may have. Keep it brief at this point.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the audience. Anyone in the audience wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. I see Kelly White. Go ahead and Kelly, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Kelly White, 4410 Francis Street. I actually live one street east of this proposed site. And I would just like to say that I was on the public meeting about this back in, I think it was October or November, and I think that the, the project is is a good project and very much needed. I would just like to ask that they remain open to discussion with the neighborhood before the final plan is approved, because I don't know that aesthetically, that it doesn't really fit in necessarily. I think that it somewhat looks like a motel. And I think that there could be some areas of improvement, and I would like, I would like for them to take some insight from the neighborhood about that.
Okay, so your concerns with the exterior, the structure and the, and the design?
Yeah, it's just, it's just very boxy and looks very much like a motel. And I, from my notes at the public meeting, I, I know they have a 10-year permit, and potentially it could be there for years, and, and I hope something like this is always here for people, but if they should leave after 10 years or 15 years, I would just be concerned with what it would turn into at that point. But even before then, I'm concerned with, with how it looks, because there's some older homes, like rock homes along there that, that look nice, and there's some modern homes, and then this is kind of in between them, so.
Okay.
I think there could be some improvements there.
Okay, we will see if we can get some answers when we get down with the public comment. Thank you. And next up, I have Sarah Wagner.
Hello. My name is Sarah Wagner with Rosedale Development Association. My address is 1403 Southwest Boulevard. And RDA supports the project, and we're especially hoping that the addition of this kind, you know, place for KU patients to stay while they're getting treatment will reduce the demand of non-owner occupied airbnbs or short-term rentals for those receiving treatment, because that is a issue in the neighborhoods around there, so in Spring Valley, too, so.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, thank you very much. Next up, Dante Passantino.
Hi, my name is Dante Passantino. I represent Miami Place, which is the owner of the property that is being discussed right now. And I just want to give a little background that we bought this property as, as a group of friends of mine, our first investment property together, and with a goal of, of holding it for a long, long time, a minimum of 10 years. I knew one of the board members from from the foundation, and they reached out to me a couple different times, asking me if I'd ever sell the property, and I said, no, we're in a long term. And then he called again and said, would you come talk to us? I want to tell you about what we're doing. And I went and I met them on site, and I met their benefactor, and Mr. Thompson, and he explained to me that his wife had passed, and that they were going to do this in memory of her. And as, as a parent of a child that's been battling cancer for the last four and a half years, and who's had to travel to Seattle and Denver and New York, which we've done multiple times this year. battling cancer for the last four and a half years, and who's had to travel to Seattle and Denver and New York, which we've done multiple times this year. These places are in huge need, not only for Kansas Medical University, but for all hospitals. And, you know, that was the tipping point for me. I went back to my partners on, on the project, told them what was going on, and they're like, how can we make this happen? So, you know, from, from someone that receives the services that this place is going to be offered, it's very ironic that I'm also the seller of the property that's, that's going to enable this to happen. But, you know, I, I've, I've spent a lot of time with all the parties involved, and it's very important to me that the aesthetics of the property, the, the look, it fits the neighborhood, all of those things are extremely important. You know, when, when I buy a property, when I put a group together to do so, our goal is to improve the neighborhood. Um, and in, in my personal opinion, this project will improve the neighborhood and bring, you know, a little beacon of light on and bring some good to the neighborhood, because people are going to be receiving something very, uh, I don't know if they've explained the whole how the nonprofit works, but it's a place for people to stay when they're being treated at KU. And, um, it's a huge blessing to have those things available to you when you're in that position. And that's, sorry for getting a little emotional, but that's, uh, that's how we all feel on this project. We're in huge, huge support.
All right, thank you very much. Darren Gotham.
Hello, uh, my name is Darren Gotham. I live at four-three-two-zero Eaton Street. I am two blocks east of the proposed site, and I'm just wondering if there are any elevation views currently available? To see how tall the building is, exterior elevations?
I think we've got some of those, and then staff will be sharing those with us here shortly. Do you have some specific questions relative to those?
No, I didn't. Um, I just, I just want to see how tall it is in reference to the other buildings and also homes that are along the rear border of houses that would be on Francis Street that would back up to the property.
Okay. Gunnar, will we have that information for Mr. Gotham? All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Gotham?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to, I'm sorry, I've got Lloyd. Just in the nick of time.
Uh, yeah, David Lloyd, I've got a, uh, forty, I'm forty-four fifty-four Rainbow Boulevard. I'm curious about what the applicant, uh, is looking, how is the other parking arranged for once the, uh, once the property is, you know, in place and being used at that level? What is the expectation as far as the rest of the, uh, parking that are a possibility to be needed more than eighteen spaces? Uh, do they have anything in mind as far as a solution for that kind of gap goes?
Okay, so your question's relative to parking?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get you some answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Beth?
Yes, hello?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just learned of this. Uh, I live in this neighborhood, forty-five thirty-five.
Yeah, I need to get your last name also, please.
Cypresson, C.I. person, Cypresson.
Okay.
That, and that's forty-five thirty-five Cambridge Street, KCK. Uh, I, again, a Spring Valley neighborhood, so just a few blocks away. I walked by there on my way to KU Med, uh, as to see my doctor. Uh, I just wanted to add in, and you, to, to question the motives and the need is not in question. So the purpose is, is, is wonderful. But I, I would imagine maybe that gentleman or anyone else, uh, living next door uh, is, it, the question is the edifice and keeping our residential neighborhood as such. So, so I just want to, uh, as, as you go on with discussion of this, uh, if we're not debating the purpose and the, the motives behind it, just what is served, how it serves also the, the greater neighborhood and ser- and so to design that is, uh, it to, to respect our community and neighborhood at the same time. So to make a home for people visiting is to also respect our homes. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go back to the applicant to, uh, address a couple of concerns. And if you could, uh, Ms. Gayad, could you maybe discuss the design a, a little bit? And then could you also comment on parking, or you or Mr. Roseman, comment on parking and, and plans if they should exceed the eighteen spaces that are currently allotted? I've, I've got you queued up still, Ms. Gayad and Mr. Roseman, so just need you to.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, okay, got it. Great. Uh, thank you. Um, so I guess I will address the first comment, I believe, by, uh, Ms. Kelly White. Um, we will, we are absolutely continuing to work through the aesthetic and the design of the project. And once we get into, into the planning commission portion of this, we will absolutely go over that a little bit more. But our intent is to be a good neighbor, and we will absolutely, we are taking all of the elements of, of the neighborhood and incorporating it into, into our design, and we will continue to tweak it as we, as we move through this process.
Okay.
Um, I can have, I, I can speak to, I will speak to the operations portion of, of the parking, and if there are any design questions regarding the parking, I'll turn it over to Dawn. Um, right now, we are contemplating one parking space per unit of, um, in, in the home. The eighteenth parking space is a permanent parking space for the house manager who resides on the property. The reason we are only doing one space per unit is because they come as families, and they typically will spend all of their time at the hospital, so the parking is not actually full during the day. Typically, people are going to take, they take their cars and they park on the hospital campus, and they stay there all day and then come back in the evening. So we felt that this was an appropriate amount of parking.
Okay, and, um, are most of the, the residents, are they, are they from out of town?
Most of them are, um, from out of town, but far enough away that they are needing, they are needing to stay close to, um, close to the hospital, but a lot of them come from, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, I'm probably not bringing multiple vehicles to, to Kansas City.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Roseman, did you have anything you wanted to add with regard to the parking situation?
Um, no, I, I, I think the one item that, that we have, that we have found from the existing facility is that the one parking space per unit has been more than accountable for, for the need, just based upon the existing, you know, house that is, that is operated by Friendship Inn. And I think that, you know, what we don't want to do is overpark and oversaturate a, a, any site in a residential area uh, in this area that's commercial and transition, uh, by overparking it. And I, and I think that, you know, what we have found is that the, the need is, is definitely fulfilled by the parking spaces that we've, that we've allocated for, to the resources. And I was going to add to the comment, you know, with regard to the residential building, it is two stories in height. Um, and, and we've worked to put together the massing in, in terms of maximize the efficiency of the building, but also in order that this is a, this is a preliminary application, without getting through the approval process of the preliminary and through the approval process of the board of zoning adjustments, uh, all the design efforts would be, would be wasted. We have, we have a lot of work yet to do, both to satisfy the Rosedale community, but also for our, our donor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, with that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and close the, uh, public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get staff comments on this project.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Playing Urban Design. Again, before you tonight, um, on this agenda item are three different, uh, variances. One is for front yard setbacks. Again, this is very typical for our, um, aging code in terms of setbacks specifically on the Rainbow, uh, corridor when considering the Rosedale Area Master Plan. The second one is for um, square foot per dwelling unit. So if you take the maximum square feet of this structure divided by that required number, it's actually eight units over, but that's a unique condition because these are short-term rentals. These aren't meant to be long-term rentals. It's not meant to be places where people live for a long period of time or have as their habitat, as their home. And then thirdly, parking, we've talked on multiple occasions with board of zoning appeals, how our code is overparked. Um, and the applicant again believes that they are meeting, uh, the needs that they see fit, um, through their specific use. Uh, again, this is in the, apologize, the Rosedale area right off of Rainbow Boulevard. It's a lot that's been, it's a parcel that includes multiple lots. There are actually two single-family homes on the property currently. This is a quick site plan of the project. We will be going in more detail on this, on the design of the project, if you will, uh, at the City Planning Commission, as this case is also being heard in conjunction with changes on twenty-two-one zero four-three Master Plan Amendment twenty-two-one zero two-three, as well as special use permit, i.e. the short terminals, twenty-two-one zero seven-four. Um, but there is some, uh, again, some landscaping and other deviations that we'll discuss at the City Planning Commission, just to run you through here, those elevations that were requested are a part of it. You can also find these online um, in our staff report accordingly. Um, there has been some support received prior to this meeting from the public. We've received no letters in opposition. Um, staff recommends approval.
Questions for staff? I'm seeing none, so I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Mohler? Commissioner Mohler?
Sorry, I needed unmute. I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, subject staff stipulations?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Armstrong, is that a second from you?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded is, for approval, subject to staff stipulations outlined in the report. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Hi.
Mohler?
Hi.
Armstrong?
I.
Uy?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And for everyone in the audience that is waiting for the, uh, planning commission to begin, we have one, let's see, two, three, four more cases to be heard on the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. We will take a short five-minute recess, and then we will convene that City Planning Commission. So I appreciate your patience, but we will be done shortly. So Janet, if you could please call the next case.
Our next case is BOZA twenty-two-one dash zero-three-four Mark Cross with Crossroad Trucking LLC for property at seventy-three thirty-one Holiday Drive. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cross, are you in the audience? If you are, I need you to raise your hand so I can call on you. There you are. Okay, sir, I've got you queued up to speak. If you'd give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Yeah, my name is Mark Cross with, as she said, Crossroad Trucking, um, small business. I have dump trucks, uh, seventy-three thirty-one Holiday Drive, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one-oh-six. I, I'm out of town a bunch, you know, with work, and I'm so busy with doing all that different stuff that I, I actually appointed my brother to, uh, take care of a bunch of this paperwork for me and kind of be in contact with you guys through it all. Definitely not something I've ever done. Uh, when I did buy my, this property down here, um, I did have plans to, you know, put me a, a nice garage up, as do most men, you know, my age, and, I mean, any age for that matter, but, uh, I've always wanted a garage at the backyard of my house, and I bought one to put up. I've paid, you know, I have a company to do the concrete. Uh, all the plans, I mean, we put in, to the best of our knowledge, being never done this before, we put in the planning and all that stuff and kind of jumped through the hoops that we thought we needed to jump through to do all this. And at the end of the day, I'm just trying to, uh, erect a garage to put my stuff that I've acquired through my life and my, my work stuff, my, I got a, a bobcat out back that I do stuff in the yard with and, uh, do small jobs with it, and, uh, my, my tractors for mowing the grass, I have them side by side, and I'm use, want to use it just for storage pretty much. And working on my cars and stuff like that, there was a, some, in the neighborhood meetings, there was a little concern about, you know, being, uh, that my, having my trucking company come through here, and that's not really what it was intended for. If I did need to, you know, pull it up in there and do a little something to it, maybe here or there, I, I was planning on doing that, you know, just trying to be completely honest here throughout the whole situation and not say, hey, that wasn't my intention at all, but, uh, I have a shop that my, all my trucks park right now. They all get taken care of when it comes to that, you know, uh, maintenance and tires and all that stuff. They get taken care, care, care of there, and I don't really want that all in my backyard anyway, you know, so. I got two kids. I got an eight-year-old boy and a two-year-old girl, and I, you know, I'd like to be able to work on my stuff out back with my son someday and just have a, a nice shop out back. I, I do want to be, uh, I do want to be part of the community and, and abide by all the visual aspects of everything. Real quick, before, I was going to see if my brother wanted to, if he's got more of the technical stuff, you know, the paperwork and all the, uh, stuff like that for you guys. If that was okay, he could jump on and answer a few questions or whatever. I, like I said, I've never done this before, so.
And that would be Matt Cross, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I've never done it before, so I'm kind of shooting in the dark here, but at the same time, I have done construction my whole life, and I'm eight years old, and I know how to do it. And if I don't, I got friends and family that do everything that does all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, just have, just have a question for you, Mr. Cross. You mentioned that you were talking about the, the building that you're going to be building in back of the house. Looking at my arrow, is, is the building that you're wanting to erect, isn't that kind of next to the house and?
Yeah, on the side.
Okay, so when you, you do have a building behind the house too, correct?
Yes. And when I bought this building, I mean, when I, and this is kind of a weird property here. I think, uh, Gunnar is, is name, we've kind of talked, and we've kind of went through this whole deal. When I bought it, I told the guys when I bought it, it needed to be zoned because it didn't have a zone at first. There used to be a, a house over here next to this, uh, in this lot. I think when they bought it, they combined all the lots together, and I acquired it all as one. Well, before it was all grandfathered in to where there was a house over there, that was a garage for that house. That garage actually has its own address. And so I thought I was just getting my house, plus the little out building out back, which used to be a chicken coop, I s- I guess, uh, the, the guy that sold it. The guy that used to live here lives down the road, and he come up and kind of gave me the rundown on what all it used to be, but, yeah, now it's, so it's got two, three different out, or two different outbuildings here. And, uh, when, and the, just real quick, my brother knows more about it all, and he's got more of the stuff, but.
I'm on.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, let's go to, go to Mr. Uh, Mr. Matt Cross, if you'd give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Yeah, my name is Matt Cross. I'm at, uh, my, I'm at one-two-one-three-one. I, I live in Overland Park, but, um, uh, you still want that?
Yeah, I want your address.
Yeah, it's one-two-one-three-one West one-hundred-and-thirty-sixth Street, apartment eight-one-seven, Overland Park, Kansas, six-six-two-two-one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so basically, we had that, that garage already, uh, acquired, and we were going to set it on this property. Basically, the, the property is dual-zone CPO and R1, but the CPO is on the residential side, and the R1 is on the side lot that is where the, uh, the dirt is, the hill, the, the area where we're going to build this, uh, building. And, um, currently, we, we found out that it exceeds the variance of the maximum square footing of a thousand square foot for accessory structure. So that right there, um, was why we applied for this, but basically, um, the building that we want to build is, is basically just a garage on the, the side of the house. Uh, not on the, connected to the house, but in the, in the area next to the, the house, the two-point-six-four acres. It's in that second, third of the lot on the other side.
Okay, so. But there's about a fourteen-hundred square foot building behind the house, correct?
Um, so the, the, there is a fourteen-hundred square foot, um, garage in front of the house on the right side, so facing north, the, the home, the, the main primary structure is, um, on the left side of the property, and then right to the right of the house, there is an accessory structure that has been existing for the last sixty years or something. on the left side of the property and then right to the right of the house, there is an accessory structure that has been existing for the last sixty years or something. And it's fourteen hundred square feet. Um, and we applied for to to build this garage so that we would be able to just put up a garage. But basically, they said that we exceed the fourteen hundred square foot by a thousand square feet and we'd have to destroy that building. That fourteen hundred square foot building in order to build the uh twenty four hundred square foot that we are trying to build.
Okay, and so you're asking for four different variances tonight. What so what's your plan? How many buildings do you want to that do you want to have on that site when you're done?
Um, so the the little chicken coop that we've talked about, it's not really so much a building. It doesn't even have a floor. It's mud. It's like a dirt floor.
Guys hear me still?
Yes, but I can only have one of you talking at a time.
Okay.
Um, so it's a dirt floor and it's um cinder blocks in a roof. There is not, it doesn't even have windows or a door. So it's basically just um a rectangular shaped pile of cinder blocks. Um, but that that would be considered a building, I think. Uh, the one building, the one accessory structure that currently exists on the property is the garage we just talked about, that's fourteen hundred square feet. Um, to the left, it's the one that has its own address, but that is the one. So I would say accordingly, there would be, if if this is approved, there will be two garages, two buildings on the property. And then that chicken coop, so that's that would be three accessory structures plus the main, the main house. And the variances uh account for um grandfathered in uh variances that already exist based on the current zoning. Um, that the house is too close to the road easement. So that would have to be a variance to push that back. Um, otherwise, we'd have to destroy a part of the building. And to adhere to the, if we went to R one, to adhere to the R one property zone, we would have to destroy a part of the front, the front part of the building if the variances weren't approved, and we would have to destroy that fourteen hundred square foot garage to add, to improve on that uh that new garage we were trying to add.
And I just want to add real quick, that little garage that you see that is next to the house facing north, I don't even use that garage. And if I needed to tear that down, I actually wouldn't mind, but I also wanted to kind of keep it. It's been in the neighborhood and I've had some of the neighbors say they would, you know, they wouldn't, they would hate to see that building go because it's been there for so long, which I don't, it doesn't bother me. But the way, the reason why is because that street is very busy down there. There's big trucks and uh people driving very fast down Hollow Drive that drive down here all the time, and I wouldn't want my wife pulling out onto that street that close to the street. It's probably only thirteen to fifteen foot before, you know, you pull out, you're almost onto the street. So that's another reason why I kind of wanted to have, wanted to have somewhere to actually park my vehicles. I could pull them out and not have to worry about, you know, getting sideswiped in the side of my door. Uh, so if if it did come down to to getting rid of that building, I would, but I just didn't want, I wanted to keep it nice and I was gonna put it maybe as a little hangout spot, you know, for the guys and little pool table and stuff in there to hang out and kind of keep it in the neighborhood. I'd hate to tear something down. And uh, like I said, I wanted to be, you know, a good guy to the neighborhood. I didn't want to come in and start destroying stuff and making it. I drove through here my whole life as a kid and I always wanted to live down here, so.
Okay, and that and that was Mr. Mark Cross speaking, right?
Yeah.
I think. Okay, anything else that you gentlemen would like to add?
Um, the sea, so basically the.
And who is this speaking?
This is Matt Cross, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, basically speaking, this this um property is al- already commercially zoned to C P O. And um we wanted to, we were going to move to R one, but um we decided against that because the destruction of the buildings we already purchased uh would have to happen because of the maximum square footage. And so basically, we were going to adhere to all C D G O D requirements and build that building uh whatever, whatever's necessary to add. You know, we were going to pave the lot uh around the the garage and we're going to do cementa siding and do do all the the necessary um requirements to adhere to that, um put up some ornamental stuff. The back half of the bill of the uh of the property is about a thirty-foot, forty-foot tall dirt hill. So really, nobody would really see the pro- this um this building that's being built, uh the forty by sixty garage. Um, and there's a lot of trees around the area, so uh that's why we applied for this.
All right, thank you. Uh, going to go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone in the audience come tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application, please raise your hand. I've got Joyce Lawrence. Ms. Lawrence, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, for the record.
All right, my name is Joyce Lawrence. I'm Secretary Morris Neighborhood Watch Group. Uh, our address is twenty-five, twenty-four South Sixty-Fifth Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six, six, one oh six.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the neighbors who are in opposition to this, as well as the watch group that is in opposition to this. It's not as rosy as what the Cross Brothers are painting of it. Uh, we've attended one meeting on site, which didn't go so well. Um, we're very familiar with the property. We've been out here thirty years dealing with it. We've been in the watch group since nineteen ninety-six as officers uh with various problems with them. That's not Mr. Cross's fault. Mr. Cross, however, wants to run dump trucks out of that area on the otherwise very busy road of dump trucks going in and out of Fahe. Eighteen-wheelers who are using the road to uh get around uh all the load um exempt from Department of Transportation, I think it is. Um, it's it's very busy. We've seen in the past three years since Fahe open, increased his operation about tenfold the traffic. We have a lot of elderly people who yo- use that road and are intimidated by it um by the amount of trucks and traffic. One of the deals for Mr. Cross's uh variances is uh to uh do away with the um twenty-five foot variance uh in front of the property. Uh, we, we would not want to see that happen. We would not want to see the dump trucks in there. He's had them on the property. He's had altercations with the neighbors uh that are behind him and up the hill uh with the power tools that they use. I think they're called pneumatic tools. The noise of the trucks themselves and the beds going up, there's neighbors that surround every bit of his property. Um, and they've complained, they've all, they, we were told by Commissioner Markley to uh file a petition, a protest on it. And the neighbors uh went to city hall, found out how to do it, and they did that and filed it with the uh unified government clerk. We've had two watch group meetings in which the neighbors have attended and let us know their viewpoints on it, uh the surrounding neighbors. And uh so far, there's only been one that had no say one way or the other. He's probably the one that wants to see the existing garage that is a garage with the garage door and has been used as a garage all along. Uh, he's probably the one that likes that, but the rest of them do not, and they have since signed the petition. Um, everyone, it's the same thing. It's the noise factor. It's the cussing and partying that goes on so far that has been there. Um, we don't, the the house is a former drug house. Uh, we just don't want to see that kind of neighbor getting in there with truck traffic. We don't need that. Holiday Drive was never meant to carry the amount of truckloads that we're seeing these days, and it's not going to end well. There's somebody that's going to get hurt. He does work on what his dump trucks there. It's not just to park. Um, and I don't know how you would stop that because we've had to call the police on him for other uh when he got into it with the neighbor cussing him out and with police presence being very slim out here and not showing up, uh we just had to put up with what he wanted to put out. It's not a good neighbor policy uh for our area. We're over three hundred households out here and we try to hold on to what we have. Holiday Drive is our only east-west route from four thirty-five to six thirty-five. And uh more neighbors than us use it.
Okay, so you're uh just a question for you. As far as the petition, how many names do you have on that petition and has that been submitted back to the unified government?
It's on file. It was filed May the twenty-seventh. Uh, the name on it, so I'll say one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven neighbors that are surrounding the property.
Okay, and then as far as your comments regarding uh parties and cussing and things like that, has that been with the current ownership or was that previous ownership?
Current, current, Mark Cross.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add, ma'am?
That's about it. Like I said, we'd like to preserve our road, uh, the the traffic, the noise. Uh, we don't need any more dump trucks down there. I would think he would feel the same way.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, we're going to go back. I'm not seeing anyone else. I'm going to go back to the Cross Brothers. We'll start off with uh Mr. Matt Cross first. Do you want to address some of the concerns?
Yeah, um, we we heard about the the petition and we talked to the neighbors uh regarding that. Uh, as far as as dump trucks, we're not interested at all in working on dump trucks. And actually, me and uh Mike Farley went back and forth regarding what would be a more um agreeable filing for the commercial uh application. And I believe we filed it under non-industrial neighborhood or something to that that effect. Um, so we 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 definitely do not want to do anything regarding dump trucks. Um, my brother's actually talked about getting out of the dump truck business altogether uh recently, so. It's just it, I don't know, anybody knows about it, but it's it's a lot of work and it's a lot of pain and uh he's got different options, so. And he'll talk to you more about that, but basically um we we're, the dump truck situation, the in the in the beginning of this application, there was this, this um I guess I'd call it a rumor that went around that we were going to do heavy maintenance on dump trucks and that was never the intention. My uh, we we wanted to basically store tr- his personal trucks and boats, uh things like that. And it, we 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 definitely don't want to put trucks in there and working on trucks and he he's got uh companies that do that for him.
Okay, but but by his own admission earlier, he did state that he might pull the truck in and do a few things to it, but but overall not looking to do a lot of maintenance on that. Because that was, that was stated earlier.
Yeah, 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 like heavy maintenance. Uh, we don't do that, like if a tire blows or something like that.
Right, okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, and Mike, um, we we talked about the the Irving and Planet Design comments. They said that um if oil changes were to be had, there needed to be oil mitigation uh done and we need to have proper sanitation and that kind of thing. We definitely do not want to do oil. It takes five gallons of oil per truck or something like that, you know. Nobody, and and you don't want to do that in your your house, you know what I mean? Um, so we we told them uh in the in the notes, we do not want to do any kind of oil or fluid changes at all. A- and we have facilities for that uh that that handle that kind of thing. And my brother, he actually, right now, he owns four or five dump trucks. He really doesn't have time to do that kind of work anyway, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go to Mr. Mark Cross. Mr. Cross, I need you to unmute yourself. There you go.
This is Mark Cross of seven thirty-one Holiday Drive.
Yes.
First of all, I just, I'm blown away that she's saying that this is a drug house and all this on a meeting that um you know, pertains to a a a building I'm trying to put up. But anyway, the second meeting came here and what she's talking about is my kids were driving a goat cart around on Easter. At noon and the neighbor was mad because my kids were riding their goat cart up by their yard up there. The only flat spot in my yard because it's a big old hill and she come down and asked me to do to to stop. And I said, it's noon on Easter. My whole family's over here. I'm not going to have them stop do riding their goat cart. I never cussed at the lady. The police have never been to my house. I had one birthday party here one time in three years. We did have loud music there. There was no cussing at the neighbor. I never cussed at her. The second meeting, we come down here, she uh voiced to me that she apologized. I apologize to her if she thought that I was cursing or anything. I never said anything. I know her personally. I know her children. And uh, I think the other, you know, people that kind of thought that that happened in the first place because she was angry and it was a big misunderstanding. They had their mind set up that I'm some young punk kid that's trying to move in here and do something that, and I I invited them all to come down to the party next time and hang out. I I'm not that type of person and I know this meeting isn't for all that, but I think what we have here, like I, she said, you know, the 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 it's went tenfold the, they've been here for sixty years or fifty years, they said, you know, the the traffic's going to go up tenfold. I mean, that's just what it is. The Holiday Drive is not a no-truck route or I promise you, Fahe would not have an asphalt plant within an eighth mile of my house down here. There's a concrete company on the corner down there. They mix concrete. It's a huge, huge building. They they haul concrete materials out of there all day long on semi-trailers. Right across the street is Fahe Construction. They're actually building a new plant right now. They ain't going anywhere. They got a hundred trucks coming out there all day long. Within an eighth mile south of me or north of me, there's a a sand plant that hauls sand out of there, out of the river all day long. Right across the street, there's a a three hundred wide-foot building that the railroad works out of. They're banging and blowing stuff up all day long. I mean, within the eighth mile, there's a railroad track there. If when they blow their horn, I can't even hear myself talk in my front yard. So when I did buy this place, I didn't, I didn't go through everything I needed to go through to 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 actually, you know, say, think about, hey, nobody's going to worry about me putting a shop up back here because I sat in the yard and it's so loud all day long. There's no way anybody would worry about that. But at the end of the day, it came out to a big deal in the beginning and, you know, there are some elderly people and I do try to be respectful to 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 the elderly people and and what they want to to not go on in the neighborhood, you know, and I and I've voiced that to them when they was here the first time, but it seemed like they all had their mind up already about me and they never even met me. This house, I want to clarify that this is not a drug house. It apparently it was before is what she's saying there.
Correct, that's that's how we took that.
Exactly. Come on, man. And at the end of the day, I'm just a young man, thirty-eight years old. I got two kids. I come down here to live here for the rest of my life. I love this little area, just as she does. I want to, I bought a shop, the building, it's it's nicer than my own house. I mean, my house, the the building looks nicer than my house. I I I don't want to mess the neighborhood up at all. Me and um Miss Bell's up the up the hill here. We did have a little altercation. She thought I cursed at her. I didn't. We hugged each other this last meeting and and they came down the yard the whole process as I was kind of leveling some dirt out to make this happen and was saying, this is beautiful, Mark, every tree you bring down, we can see more of the sunset. And this is amazing down here, what you're doing. And then that thing happened on Easter and then it turned into a whole big ordeal where she said, she told everybody I cussed her out and they all hated me after that, apparently. I've never had no one come up and voice anything. That day, the cops didn't even stop here because they knew I wasn't doing anything wrong. They seen a bunch of people on Easter.
Okay, but no, no, no police have been to call the property or anything like that.
You can look that up. The police have been to the neighbor that I in question way more times than they've been to my house. So, I mean, I've never been, they've never been here since.
Okay, there you go. That's what I was hoping you'd clarify.
Look that up on record. They've never come to my house and talked to me for nothing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Mr. Chair is going to handle your planner design. Uh, this case is being heard in conjunction with changes on twenty twenty one zero zero four and master plan amendment twenty twenty one zero one seven. There's a typo in the both. There's a typo in the Boza agenda um that says it's also being heard in conjunction with a special use permit. It is not. There's no special use permit tied to this case.
Okay.
There are multiple variances being requested. Um, this project is in the Morris area of Turner, if you will, probably more Morrison Turner. Um, again, right at seventy-fourth and Holiday uh Holiday Drive. Again, if you're unfamiliar with that intersection, there is a small node of commercial uses here that the applicant is adjacent to. Again, I apologize for the fuzzy pictures, but you can see what we're trying to rectify here is is a split zoning application. It is C P O for the house. It is essentially R one residential for the rest of the district. You cannot live in a C P O district, but you can live in a C one district. Again, that changes zone will be heard later this evening. So essentially, what we're dealing with is a split zoning that needs to be fixed as well as a a bunch of legal non-conforming uses. The applicant is requesting that the changes zone be um to uh C one neighborhood, commercial C P one neighborhood, commercial, so it'll match the adjacent property. It'll fit into the character of the commercial node. It'll also provide the flexibility because you can also, you can do neighborhood retail as well as residential uses um on the property or on in a C one district. as well as residential uses um on the property or on, in a C one district, I should say. However, if you're using a C one zone for R one purposes, you have to meet R one standards, which is why all the variances before you are from the R one district. So there is the setback of twenty-five feet and you can see it from the building outlines here. Those buildings which were built long ago, well before the zoning code was established, were built right on the property line. It would be a um undue burden to ask the applicant to remove those structures, so we're here for a variances for both of them. And while this garage looks like it's a separate building from the primary structure, which is under the label CPO, um, the previous owner, I, we believe attached them, so this is one structure and again, there's two accessory structures currently on the property, which leads us to the third variance there in an R one district. You can only have one accessory structure. That accessory structure, the fourth variance can only be a thousand square feet. So between this, this and this and what is proposed twenty-four hundred, we are well over the thousand square feet allowed in a in a, in an R one district. Um, our our recommendation um, in the staff report is a little all over the place, so allow me to muddle through it here for just a quick second. Um, essentially what we are saying is that we approve variance number one and two for the two setbacks, for the setbacks. We can approve a variant, we recommend an approval for a variance for more than one accessory structure, but we're asking the applicant as a condition of approval to remove one of the accessory structures. It sounds like they want to move, remove potentially the one behind the house here as opposed to the garage. The proposed garage, as you can, oh, this is a much better picture. The proposed garage is essentially here, so now the image is flipped. This is Holiday Drive on page south. This looks like it's two structures. It is one attached structure. The garage has since been attached to the primary structure. So we're talking about this accessory structure, this old garage accessory structure and what's proposed here. Um, no matter how you cut it, if you were to keep one or even both or none of the accessory structures and just have the one proposed accessory structure, it would be well over a thousand square feet um, for the uh, that's allowed in R one districts. I'll say just a few more things. We are asking them to meet the Commercial Design Guidelines standards for that new accessory structure, so they have made some improvements to the proposed um to the proposed garage. Um, we are also asking them to create a, and we'll go over this in more detail um for the change of zone. But it should be clarified that for the uh member of the public who spoke today, a protest petition can only be filed after a planning commission hearing. The one they filed in May was for a case that no longer exists. The case has since changed. We have re-noticed the project and we have this project in front of us today, so if the community wants to pro- file a protest petition, it can only happen after the planning commission makes this decision tonight. Um, and so essentially you gotta do it all over again. That city clerk one that's sitting on the desk there is not valid because it is not for this case, because this case has changed, so I just wanted to make that abundantly clear. So again, staff recommends approval of the setback variances. We do, we are, we are we believe that you can allow two accessory structures on this property. Um, we do, but we have to, we're asking the applicant to remove one of them. I think we should define which one it is tonight um, uh, with the applicant. And then we are uh in approval of the, uh, or do recommend approval for the uh variance for the larger accessory structure with the um, with the condition of the Commercial Design Guidelines as well as with the condition that no commercial use can be for that property. This is only a hobby barn. And any use of the property for a commercial business, i.e. if you brought your dump truck in just to work on it a little bit, would require a s- a separate special use permit as per the code, so no commercial activity can happen on this property. Um, so long as it's being used as your residence. Um, and if so, if you brought, you couldn't, you couldn't, even if it was a commercially zone property and you weren't living there, you would still need an SUP to do maintenance of a vehicle on that property above and beyond what is allowed in the zone. So just to be abundantly clear on the commercial use of the property. So with that, um, staff will take in questions that the commission might have.
Hey, Commissioner Jones.
So Gunner, basically you're recommending that variance one and two be approved. Variance um, three be denied and variance four be approved. And then also, did I hear the addition of making sure that we know what building, that everybody's clear on that, would need to be uh instructed?
I believe the uh, this is gonna hand Director Planner and Design. You're correct on variance one and two. The staff report recommends denial for variance three and four, but I wanted to sort of caveat that based on the discussion tonight and potentially amend our staff report. I think that we can't get up behind all three accessory structures. We could get behind two if we just identified which one was being removed, although to remove the two accessory structures in, and in place of adding a new accessory structure that's over the limit would probably be more in line with the intent of the zoning code. Um, it all depends on whether you want to, uh, let me get to the picture here.
And why you?
There isn't, there is not a, you can kind of see it in the, this right here is the garage. This is the garage attached to the house that has since been attached to the house that's getting the setback variance. This is a piece, I believe, of the gr- of the other garage that's more quote historic. Um, that also needs a setback variance, but it's pretty old and beat up, so if you want to make the case that you think it maintains the street wall or the character of the neighborhood, I mean, yeah, we can get on board with that if you wanted to keep that uh accessory structure, but again, the intent of the code is to have one accessory structure and that accessory structure should be a thousand square feet. They're already asking for an excessive of twenty-four hundred a twenty-four hundred square foot accessory structure, so they're well over what's allowed, so it would probably make sense if we got rid of at least one, if not both of the accessory structures and eliminate that variance. Um, but again, we've had a lot of commercial, we've had a lot of accessory structures in the past that have gone well over a thousand square feet. The lot is large. It's commercial in nature along this, along this stretch of Holiday Drive, along this node. Um, so it's not necessarily like in a it's adjacent to residential neighborhood and downslope from, as opposed to within a residential block, if that makes sense?
Yes, and so in line, because that's what I meant, so I appreciate you clarifying that in line with the amended staff report then for that additional accessory structure. Just want to be clear on what you would be recommending as the, the grand total square footage that you're good with.
It depends on if we keep an accessory structure or not. So if we eliminate both accessory structures, you would be asking for a variance for twenty-four hundred square feet. If you kept the accessory structure that is a garage, which is fourteen hundred square feet, you would be asking for twenty-eight hundred above the thousand square foot maximum. So it's quite a bit, even with just the one new barn, if you will, or garage, if you will, um, to keep the, what's called historic garage would significantly add to the amount of square feet of accessory structure, so. Again, staff believes you could probably fit all, all that you need in terms of your personal stuff in a twenty-four hundred square foot barn.
So Gunner, the garage in front, that would be in, I guess it would be in the same area of this one. It, that's fourteen hundred square feet, so there'd be, we'd have thirty-eight hundred square feet of storage.
Yep.
So we'd, we'd be way outside the thousand square feet.
You'd be a twenty-eight up above what's allowed, yes.
All right, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones, did you still have your hand up again? Okay, no, you're removing it. Uh, okay, yes, go ahead.
Well, I had removed it, but based on what you said, uh, Chairman, I was going to say, um, we are gonna hear from Mr. Cross again so that we can get this straight then. Okay, I'm good with that.
Is that what you want to do, Gunner? Go back to the applicant to get?
I think it would behoove us to ask him if he can live without both accessory structures or if he wanted to keep one, which one he wants to keep and then continue the conversation.
Okay, this is my understanding, the one he's willing to part with is the cinder block structure uh that's further back. Are we gonna go back to the uh, I mean, all right, so let's go back to Mr. Mark Cross.
So first, I just want to thank Gunner for being extremely fair there. You know, I don't feel like he was biased anyway and I, I, I really appreciate that. Um. I hate to get rid of either one of them because I have so many um different ideas for my property here, so the house that you see there as the, in the bottom right, that, that, that area there, which is my house, that's my kitchen. Now, that, that right there is the exterior structure, which isn't, that used to be an old chicken coop. That is my house. That, there's a doorway there in my living room that goes down into my garage there, what he's pointing at there. I want to, and that garage door is toward the front of the street, which you see is very close to the street, so I wanted to close that garage door off. And I wanted to make that like an entertainment room for my house because it's actually two levels in there. There is a, there is a, a nicely built, you know, floor mid, midway in there, so we was gonna put it like you know, maybe a bedroom up there, because right now we're only dealing with two bedrooms and uh we was trying to make, you know, because I have two kids and we're trying to make it eventually to where we can all three have our own bedrooms, but uh if it comes down to it, I wouldn't mind at all getting rid of the garage out front, which really hurts me to think that it would mess the the neighborhood structure up, because I know the neighbors probably like that building. I like it myself, just looking at it. Even if I didn't put anything in there, I just hate to tear something down going down the road that I've loved to drive down through my whole, whole life, but uh, I would probably take that one down because it's so close to the street that even pulling out of there is just dangerous. The, I mean, the, the, the road is very busy and I don't think, you know, being that the railroad, all them different companies are down there, I hate to say that I think the neighborhood watch really does. I, I think they're, they're, they're one a good thing here, but at the same time, there's no way we're gonna be able to stop that much traffic coming down through there and I have the
Mr. Cross, I, I, I just want to interrupt you. We've got a ton of cases behind George tonight. We really just which building are, can you live without?
Probably the garage down there, because as you see, the property line comes up there behind that garage and that kind of provides me a little pr- privacy for the back of my house right there.
Okay.
So probably the one down the street that he has the cursor on now.
All right, Gunner.
Good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cross. Okay, any, anything else that you want to add, Gunner?
Uh, this is gonna hand Director Planner and Design. So if we took the applicant's request to keep this structure, and again, later in the case, we'll talk about getting a retroactive building permit and stuff for that building and so on and so forth, but um but that would mean we would still need a variance for two accessory structures if we were to only remove what we've been calling the historic garage here.
So we're, we're talking about, that you're calling that the historic garage?
Yep.
All right.
So all four variances are still needed based on that conversation.
All right, questions for staff based on the revised information? Uh, excuse me, Commissioner Jones.
Okay, but Gunner, the stipulations would be amended, correct?
No, the conditions still stand. Um, I think what we're, so here's, so just to run through it. Uh, variance one is for this building setback. That's staying, so we need it. If they remove this building, we don't need variance number two because it was a setback for this property, which still keeps this accessory structure in the rear of the house and this new proposed accessory structure, which between the two is roughly thirty-two hundred square feet, still, uh, excuse me, is roughly around three thousand square feet. So two, twenty-four hundred plus about six hundred-ish for this guy back here. Um, which is still two thousand over what is allowed um by code.
Clear as mud?
That should change the conditions of approval as written currently in the staff report.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, I'm ready for a motion when you all are. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the variances subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, and that includes the removal of the historic structure on the front, correct?
It's correct.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval as stated by the maker and with the revised stipulations from staff? We're clear what we're doing. Okay, saying none, roll call please.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Chairman, that motion passes. Five in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Our next application is B O C A twenty twenty-one dash zero four zero. Chad Streeter for property at forty-eight eleven North Hundred and Thirty Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Streeter, uh, go ahead and give us your name, please, address, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Chad Streeter, forty-eight eleven North Hundred and Thirty Street. I am the property owner and the applicant. We are proposing a detached garage structure of four hundred and sixty-nine square feet with a uh attached covered patio, which is an extension of an existing patio located behind the house. Uh, the group, the proposed garage would be located in the rear yard um along the property line. Uh, will match the, the character of the existing structure. Uh, the neighborhood currently is, uh, consists of estate lots. Uh, so the size of the structure uh is in conformance with the, the current size of the house and the neighborhood. Um, in terms of massing, uh, the, the side of the house where the garage is gonna be built, uh, there's quite a bit of landscaping, trees, uh, pine trees that uh would take the place of, so in terms of blocking the view of the neighbors, that would be impacted. And then uh our only neighbors behind us are across the pond, which is six to seven hundred feet. So the, the, the impact from their view would be minimal. The covered patio area is located directly behind the house, which wouldn't be visible from anywhere other than the neighbors on your side of the pond.
Okay, anything else? And when you say built uh with the character of the house, the house is brick, is
Correct, yeah.
Really gonna be brick as well?
Yes, correct.
So the, the structure of the building would be brick as well?
Right.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, is anyone in the audience here tonight speaking in favor of or in opposition to this request? Raise your hand. Saying none, we'll go to staff and get their comment.
English chairs is gonna hand Director Planner and Design. This variance is for um an accessory structure that exceeds the square, uh, thousand square foot uh maximum for accessory structures. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan. You can see the parcel right here as the applicant mentioned, adjacent to um lake. A couple of pictures on the project. Um, staff's review found that the applicant did not meet the five statutory requirements of a variance. Um, however, uh, we, so we do recommend denial, however, if the order of zoning appeals does want to move forward with approval, we would ask that the following conditions be included. One, as the applicant mentioned, that the primary structure, excuse me, that the accessory structure matched the materiality of the primary structure, that no accessory dwelling unit be uh developed, i.e. this accessory structure could not be habitable and rented or used as a unit of housing, and two, that no uh commercial, it's again become a standard condition for us for these types of requests that no uh commercial use of said accessory structure is to occur. You can see some of the elevations with the brick and other materiality as described uh by the applicant here. Um. Staff taking questions as needed.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Saying none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Miller. Need you to unmute yourself, Commissioner Miller.
Gunner, could you restate those? Unless someone else?
The conditions of approval?
Well, if I was going to make a, the motion for approval, but I wanted to make sure I added, included the stipulations you wanted us to include.
Sure, they're, um, they're listed in the staff report and on the slides right here, but essentially that, that they are matched, that the accessory structure matches the primary structure's materials in terms of construction, that no commercial use of the accessory structure is to That no commercial use of the accessory structure is to occur and that that accessory structure cannot be used as an accessory dwelling units.
Okay, I would move to approve with the additionally stated um stipulations for approval as stated by Director Hand.
Motion is made for approval uh and. Commissioner, I got Commissioner Muller. Let's go with Commissioner Armstrong first.
I just wanted to second.
All right, Commissioner Muller, did you was it? Were you gonna second that motion or do you have discussion?
No, I was gonna second.
All right, thank you. Uh, discussion. Gunner, could you just review quickly your uh your rationale for the motion for for the recommendation denial as far as the does not meet the criteria?
Uh, yes. Again, staff felt there wasn't a unique situation for the property that required to go over a thousand square feet.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal subject to the stated conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you.
Our next appeal is B O Z A twenty twenty one dash zero four two. Eric Fletcher for property at forty four sixty one Eaton Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Fletcher, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, for the record. Tell us about your project.
Uh, yes, uh, I'm Eric Fletcher and I currently live at forty four sixty one Eaton Street apartment number two, Kansas City, Kansas, six, six, one, zero, three. Um, this, these variances you're being applied for in conjunction with change of zone twenty twenty one zero thirty seven. Uh, I purchased the property back in June of this year um and applied for rental licensing. Uh, the property is currently a uh operating triplex. Um, I applied for rental licensing and rental licensing uh informed me that the property was incorrectly done, so they wouldn't be able to grant me a license. Um, I went ahead and initiated contact with the Department of Planning and Zoning and have uh. Applied for both the change of zone and these two variances. Um, the property from what we have discovered has been operating as a triplex since approximately the nineteen fifties or nineteen sixties uh when it was converted from a single family home originally. Um. At some point, uh, I guess they'd never resumed the property correctly. Um, and the early two thousands, there was a temporary nonconforming use uh permit that was issued for the property. I believe one of my neighbors, Myra Coleman, had contacted me as part of the. Um, neighborhood meeting process and said that she had previously owned the property and she had gone through that process. Um, unfortunately, the previous owner never uh applied for rental licensing and uh I lost the ability to apply for that nonconform use permit. So I'm applying for a full change of zone for the property and going through this whole process. Uh, as part of the change of zone, I am requesting to leave the property in its as is condition and applying for these two variances. The property currently has four parking spaces. Or an R three unit, uh, which I would like to rezone the property as I would technically be required to have two parking spaces per unit, so six total spaces. So I'm requesting that I uh be granted a variance and leave the property with four parking spaces. Uh, I believe this is sufficient since there are two smaller one bedroom. Um. Apartments within the residence that would typically field uh one parking space. Typically require one parking space and I'm currently living in one of those units and only use one space. Um, I'm also applying for a variance from the required amount of covered parking, which would be one per each unit of property. And no parking is currently covered. And I'm requesting a variance for this as opposed to putting up a uh hardboard or other type of structure. As many um. Many properties within the area do not currently have covered parking and it wouldn't really detract from the character of the neighborhood. It would be very similar to long properties. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to deal with them.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Mister Gotham? Good. Once again, I need you to give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Darren Gotham. I'm at forty three. Four, three, two, zero Eaton, which is essentially. Of the block from this address. Uh, Eric is correct, this address has been a rental house with multiple units. For many years. Um, I just have a question is. Is he planning on uh paving the back? Uh, portion of the house and is currently gravel?
Okay, we'll get you the answer to that. Is that the only question you have?
Uh, yes.
All right, we'll get you an answer to that question. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wanna speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Okay, we'll go back to the applicant. Mister Fletcher, can you address the question as far as the parking in the rear of the building? Is it gonna be gravel or is it gonna be paved?
Sure, I had originally applied applied for a third variance to maintain a gravel lot under the understanding that I would have to go ahead and replace the approach. And the sidewalk adjacent to it that is completely degraded over time. Uh, since taking that out of the variances under the understanding that I'm going to that go have to work with planning and zoning right away and engineering services to go ahead and. Get the final uh verdict on what I can do with that lot. Ideally, I would like to maintain it as gravel. And redo the approach so that I prevent any gravel spill off onto the street. If that that isn't acceptable to departments with working through the process to go ahead and um. I guess get that approach done over the next year. Uh, I would be looking at either doing a paved lot or installing some sort of pavers, whichever would be a more cost effective option.
All right. All right, thank you. Uh, we'll now close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hannah and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Gunner Hand, Director Planner and Design. Again, this is uh this application is for two different variances, one for the number of parking, one one for the covered parking. This as the applicant mentioned, this is associated with changes on twenty twenty one zero three seven master plan amendment. Twenty twenty one zero two one, which will be heard later this evening by the City Planning Commission. This is in the Rosedale Area Master Plan. Uh, pretty close to state line, right on a corner lot. Um, again, you can see the house has really from the from the from the front yard, the appearance of a single family home is noted, but it has served as a. Uh, multi multi-family building for quite some time. Um, staff uh does recommend approval of the variances as we recognize that we are both. That we are overparked in our code of ordinances. We do have conditions of approval, which were touched on this uh by the applicant as well. One is that the um cert that the that the lot be an improved service. You can see here that it is gravel. Um, and two, he needs to fix the uh driveway apron. Uh, to be further defined by our planning, engineering and public works department. Um, there is a code section that uh for a multifamily. Driveway. It is supposed to be wider than a standard single family driveway. Um, so we are working through right now. We'll have the width of that driveway apron, but we do know it needs to be concrete and you can kind of see it right here before the. Uh, before the tree right here that there's a patch of of sidewalk that's gone missing on the property, so we asked to fix that patch while they're in here fixing the curb. Uh, the curb cut accordingly. There are no NOBs on this property. We've received no letters of support or opposition before this evening's meeting. Again, staff recommends approval with those conditions.
Questions for uh Director Hand?
Oh, I apologize. We did receive letters of support. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Uh, Commissioner Armstrong.
Uh, I move to approve subject to staff uh comments and stipulations.
Okay, motion to approve made by Commissioner Armstrong. Commissioner Jones, is that a second from you?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moved and seconded. Is there a mo- excuse me, is there any discussion on this motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please, Janet.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal subject to the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and this will be our final case to be heard uh that you're calling now, correct, Janet?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's B O Z A twenty twenty one dash zero four four Matt Watkins with Reese Commercial Incorporated. For property. I'm sorry.
Twenty nine oh eight north.
Yeah, twenty nine oh eight, north one hundred third terrace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any member of the board have any com? Have any um. Contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Watkins got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm Matt Watkins, four, zero, two, three, north one hundred and eleven streets, Kansas City, Kansas, six, six, one, oh, nine. Um, you all know I'm a commercial realtor in the area. Um, I have a property for sale here right next to the Comfort Inn off of one hundred and second street. Um, I'm hoping that we can add a sign that draws some attention from the highway. Um, I I realize that we're in. Violation of every um potential um covenant here and and that staff has asked us to deny the application, but. This is a temporary sign in nature. You know, my normal signs are four by four, eight by eight, what whatnot. Um, and. Um, the just that that wouldn't cut it. There's not enough traffic on a on a hundred and I think it's actually one hundred and third street turns into one hundred and second. Um, that really draws the the normal sign um sort of attention and so. Um, we've got a banner that is classy in nature, normal, just shows my phone number mainly pads land for sale. Um, we had it up on a trailer and with anticipation, we're gonna pull a permit for construction on a project that fell through. And so we removed the trailer. Um, and we are going through this process to try and put a sign up um through this, so I respectfully. Uh, ask for your consideration tonight. Uh, I know this is. Not a normal thing, but um would appreciate your your consideration in this uh in this endeavor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mister Watkins? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Uh, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hannah and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director Planner and Design. Uh, this agenda item is requesting two variants, one for the size and one for the height of a temporary sign. Temporary signs in the code ordinances are for ninety days or less. The most typical temporary sign, for instance, is like for a political sign. Um, yard sign, if you will, those are temporary signs. Um, this is in the. Not exactly where it's supposed to be that pin is, but it is in the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan, a little farther north there uh from where it's located. Um, these again off uh just off four thirty five off north one hundred third terrace that uh directly to the north off the page is Leavenworth Road. Um, so this is right down the street from the new um Woodlands Industrial Complex. Uh, you can see a couple of pictures here. Um, uh, again, staff does recommend denial of this case because we do not feel like it meets the um standards for the uh for a variance. However, if the application, excuse me, if the commission does wanna move forward with a recommendation of pool, we do have. Uh, we do have a condition or two, namely that it only be for ninety days, which again is the code for temporary signs. And two, there is a provision in the temporary sign code that if you get farther and farther away from a property from the property line. You can go higher and higher, but the highest that that maxes out is still well below. I believe the sixteen feet uh height limit that the applicant is requesting. So if you do recommend approval. We uh the conditions are one that we sort of reiterate that it's ninety days. Uh, which should go unsaid, but also that it goes at least thirty five feet back to give some semblance of that sort of uh intent in the code to get it farther away from property line to go higher. Um, and with that, I'd take any questions.
Questions for Director Hand? So Gunner, just going back, just just a quick one regarding the 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 height. I mean, given that this is a large parcel along such a busy stretch of the road. There's no, there's no deviations from the sign code with regard to signage based on the the size of the the piece of property that's gonna go on. Where it's gonna be that kind of thing.
Not for temporary signs now.
So it doesn't matter whether it's there or if it was just along Georgia Avenue next to a subdivision. It's this the same requirement whether it's along four thirty five on a forty acre parcel versus a standard lot along Georgia Avenue underneath four thirty five.
That is correct. They try to give some flexibility based on the distance requirement I described, but there is only a provision in the code for permanent signs that can go a little bit bigger on things like adjacent freeways.
Okay. Other questions for Director Hand? Uh, Commissioner Muller.
I'm sorry, I just like to make a motion when it's time.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Mister Watkins, did you need a clarification?
Uh, I just wanted to let you know that we would be okay with those stipulations.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mister Muller, Commissioner Muller, go ahead with your motion if you like.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff stipulations and comments.
Your motion is to approve the the uh the variance?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion to approve made by Commissioner. Muller, Commissioner Armstrong, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Motion is ma- made to approve subject to staff comments. Commissioner Jones, you have comment?
It is with additional stipulation, I think that Gunner said on the timeframe, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion uh motion is for approval with the additional stipulation on timeframe. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal with the staff's revised conditions passes five in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. That will conclude the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. I appreciate everyone's attendance. We will be starting the City Planning Commission. We're gonna take a five minute break and we will begin promptly in five minutes. So thank you all and we'll be right back to you. So thank you all and we'll be right back to you. Few minute warning. Janet, are you ready to go?
I actually just need about thirty seconds. I'm printing something off.
You got it. Let me know when you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the December thirteenth meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as chairman of tonight's meeting. Karen Jones will be assisting me as the vice chair of tonight's meeting. Also on hand with us is Gunner Hand, the Director of Land Use and Urban Planning. Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. Members of the planning staff Byron Toy and Patrick Waters with the Unified Government Legal Counsel. We also have the following commissioners present this evening, Commissioner Joanne Huey, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Jake Miller. With that, I will turn the meeting back over to Secretary Parker. She will read the opening statement on how we will handle tonight's meeting. Janet?
We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. Due to COVID nineteen, the members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members, please use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse or if you need a break, use the raise your hand feature. For those in attendance, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you have called in by telephone only, or if you're having trouble logging into the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco kck.org as Secretary Parker is monitoring that email. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, January sixth, twenty twenty two. For final plans and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time and the Planning Commission may by two thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five minute increments. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them by Chairman Carson. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make the recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Urban Planning and Land Use Department at planninginfo@yco kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven P M. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda. Items on the consent agenda are final plans, final plans or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda. And when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this evening's hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, January sixth, twenty twenty two at seven P M. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the November eighth, twenty twenty one, City Planning Commission Minutes. Plaid twenty twenty one dash zero two four, Will Anderson with B H C Rhodes. Final plan for two single family lots at fifty six twenty one and fifty seven oh one North Hundred Seventh Street. Plan review application, P R, twenty twenty one dash zero three two, Joe Stewart. Final plan review to convert Krispy Kreme Donut Shop to Starbucks Coffee Shop at seventy six twenty eight State Avenue. Plan review application, P R, twenty twenty one dash zero three six, Reed Roberts. Final plan review to add new catering kitchen to New Olive at Willow Creek Event Space at thirty one fifty North Ninety First Street. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items? Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report attachments dated December thirteen, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is anyone on the commission want anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audiences. Is there anyone in the audience that wants anything removed from the consent agenda for special consideration? Please raise your hand this time. Seeing none, we'll go back to the commission. We'll stand for a motion on the consent agenda as presented. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Miller, is that a second? All right, thank you. Commissioner Muller was, thank you. Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Huey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the consent agenda subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, none of these items will go on to the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, thank you.
And that now completes the consent agenda and we will now move on to consideration of the non-consent agenda. We have two items that we're going to hear together and then we will vote on them separately. Master plan amendment, N P L, twenty twenty one dash zero one seven. Mark Cross with Crossroad Trucking LLC. Master plan amendment from low density residential to neighborhood commercial, citywide master plan at seventy three thirty one Holiday Drive. Change of zone application, C O Z, twenty twenty one dash zero zero four. Change of zone from R one, single family and C P O planned non-retail business district to C P one planned limited business district for a single family residence and accessory structures at seventy three thirty one Holiday Drive. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report attachments dated December thirteen, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, the notices to property owners, and I would remind the commission that we had the extensive testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, which will also be part of the record for this case. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Cross, Mr. Mark Cross, I've got you both unmuted. If one of you could just present your case before the planning commission and keep in mind, we've heard a lot of your testimony already and please keep in mind that brevity is a virtue.
Yeah, this is Matthew Cross. Should I say my address again?
Yes, please.
It's a one two one three one West Hundred and Thirty Sixth Street, apartment eight one seven Overland Park, Kansas, six six two two one. So basically, it's a split zone property. We purchased it a few years ago and we bought a structure to pur- we purchased a structure to build on the the two thirds half of the property at two two point six four acres. And we considered going to R one, but with everything that that was going to go along with that, we had to redesign a few things and and it was going to cost a lot more money to do that. And basically, the C one, it fit better with the the overall neighborhood flow, as it were. Mark, do you have anything you want to say?
Oh, I'm unmuted already?
Yes.
Raise my hand, sorry. Yeah, just to try to
I think you muted yourself again.
Where is? I've lost Mark Cross, though. There he is. Go ahead, Mr. Cross.
There we go. Mark Cross, seventy three thirty one Holiday Drive. Yeah, I I think I said everything to try to keep it brief there. I know you guys are working late, but I think I said a lot of stuff that I probably shouldn't have said before when it comes to the testimony and how I want to comply with the neighbors. I want to be a good neighbor. I I didn't mean to, you know, create any any bad stuff to go on in the neighborhood. I'm not great with the public speaking here, as you can see. But I'm just trying to put up my building out here and whatever you guys need me to do to do it correctly, I'll do it. This is the first property I've ever purchased in my life. So I'm definitely not an expert when it comes to all this, but here I'm just here with my hands out and let me know what I need to do to to get the building up. Because as I looked around, you know, in this neighborhood, there's buildings everywhere. Everybody's got their own garage and shops and it's a really busy street as stated before by the the neighbor, that's the neighborhood watch officer or whatever. And I just want to put a shop up, man, so I can work on my cars and stuff with my kid and do stuff and like I've always wanted to. I don't know how how to how to make it any more complex than that.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Han to get his comments on both cases.
Ms. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director Planner and Designer. Again, this case is being heard in cor- collaboration, conjunction with Boza case twenty twenty one zero three four, which was approved with some conditions as discussed earlier this evening. Again, this is in the Morris area, Morris kind of neighborhood of the Turner area, if you will. Right off of Holiday Drive near the small commercial node of Seventy Fourth and Holiday Drive, which you can see here. Again, this is primarily to fix the split zoning on this property. A previous owner had rezoned it to C P O to kind of and then sort of converted a single family house into an office. The applicant then converted it, bought it and converted it back to his home, to a home. So we're trying to maintain that flexibility while allowing again a residential use in the C in the C one district, which which can be done with R one standards as previously discussed. We've talked about the garage. Again, we agreed at the Boza case, the playing order commissioner, excuse me, the Board of Zoning Appeals agreed in the in the hearing earlier this evening, so get rid of the old In the, um, uh, hearing earlier this evening, so get rid of the old historic garage for the new garage. And keep the, uh, one of the existing accessory structures. We've seen these pictures before. This is the accessory garage. Um, there are a couple of conditions of approval related to this case. Again, it's adjacent to a commercial node. This is on the sidewalk and trails master plan for Holiday Drive, so we are asking that the applicant build a sidewalk from their property to, um, the adjacent property heading west. Um, it doesn't need to be the full length. We can work through that at building inspection. They do need to, um. They do need to get a right-of-way permit from the Public Works Department to confi- to confirm, uh, the in and out of the property for these uses. They do need to upgrade the driveway aprons to U G standards, which is concrete. Um, and we do have a condition of approval, uh, related to no commercial uses of the garage, so it's gotta be hobby stuff only. Uh, Mister Cross cannot bring his dump trucks onto the property and work on them, um, with this condition if approved. Um, there are lots of old N O Vs not associated with, uh, Mister Cross in this case, but older than since before he bought it. We have received no letters of support. We heard a little bit of opposition, I believe, at Board of Zoning Appeals tonight, but we've received nothing in writing to date. Staff recommends approval, uh, which is an amendment from our previous. Which kinda goes along with the amended conversation we had at the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. Uh, questions for Director Hand? Okay, seeing none, we'll need two, uh, motions. One, uh, first for the change of zone and then the master plan amendment.
Mister Chairman.
Sorry, wrong order.
Yes, we need to just reverse those and do the master plan first, please.
All right, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve master plan amendment N P L two zero two-one dash zero one seven, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones for the master plan amendment. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Huey.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this master plan amendment, subject to the conditions of the staff passes. Five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now we'll hear one on the change of zone. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve change of zone number two zero two-one dash zero zero four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Huey.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone application, subject to the conditions of the staff passes. Five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mister Cross. This will be heard once again, January sixth, uh, before the Board of County Commissioners at seven P M. Good luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys.
Mister Chairman, we now have two applications that will be heard together. Master plan amendment N P L twenty twenty-one dash zero one eight Weston Sparks with Ride Forever Skate Park. Master plan amendment from low-density residential to community commercial citywide master plan. At two-thirty South Sixty-Fifth Street and change of zone application C O Z twenty twenty-one dash zero two-nine Weston Sparks. Change of zone from R one single-family district to C P three planned commercial district. To convert warehouse to skate park and skate school at two-thirty South Sixty-Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo for the change of zone and master plan and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No. Okay, Mister Hutton, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about this project.
Thank you. William W. Hutton. My office address is five oh nine Armstrong Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. Um, I represent Dan Jansen and Weston Sparks. Dan Jansen is the owner of the property. Mister Sparks is the operator of the skate park. And I would say, first of all, we very much appreciate the approval in October of the special use permit for the forever skate park at this location. And my client is now in operation. What we are asking for tonight is the approval of the change of zone from R one single-family to C P three planned commercial district. We believe that provides a buffer for the low-density residential zoning to the north. And from the industrial properties, which are to the south as well as to the east. Uh, we disagree that this is surrounded by low, uh, density residential. What has happened is J E Dunn and Amazon have encroached into this area. And that's basically where this area is going. Uh, so we think this is a good solution. There's been no residential construction in this area in over fifty years. The one enclave that's referenced by the planning staff is my client's neighbor. She has no objection to this and actually purchased this property after there had been, uh, the school located there. And after there had been other businesses before my client purchased it and actually followed the, um, requirements of getting proper permits and zoning. So that's why we're here. I'm more than willing to answer any questions, uh, and address the staff recommendations in their denial if necessary.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mister Hutton? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand.
We have two letters.
We have two letters of support. Um, I would also tell you, and I have Dan Jansen, the owner of the property here with me in my office.
All right, thank you. Again, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hannigan, get his comment.
Mister Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Uh, as the applicant mentioned, um, this case, uh, or this property was approved for a special use permit, S P twenty twenty-one zero six-seven. I believe it was two months ago now for the skate park to begin operations in the former school. In schools or allowed in residential districts. Um, and so to use it as a commercial property required a special use permit. The applicant is now coming before of us to change the underlying land use and zone for the entire property to commercial in nature. Staff does believe this is a further encroachment of non-residential uses into this small residential enclave. Um, yes, J E Dunn's crane operation blew that cranes to the south. And the first, um, Amazon distribution center a few years ago is directly to the north. Uh, we would say that's all the more reason to not allow further commercial encroachment or industrial encroachment into the property. Um, I forgot to flip through the slides here. This is in the Riverside area, just north of Cod Drive. Um, you can see the property right here. This is the blue hat, uh, just to page north of, uh, slide north is the Amazon facility. And again, fifty, uh, sixty-fifth, excuse me, gets you right on to Cod Drive here. Uh, this is the current zoning of the property, so it is a mix of, of, uh, industrial, um, ag and residential properties in the immediate vicinity. You can see it's an odd-shaped parcel that wraps around the single-family on. The applicant was mentioning this neighbor has no, uh, is not in opposition to the change of zone. Um, as stated, a couple of, uh, pictures of the property. There's a bunch of old N O Vs on the property, which again predate this, uh, current application. Um, they, we have received those letters of support as noted by the applicant a little bit earlier. We've received no letters in opposition. Again, staff recommends now because we think it's further encroachment. If the planning commission decides to move forward with final approve. Uh, approval, excuse me, uh, with a recommendation to approve the board commissioners. We kinda doubled down on some of the conditions that we included in special use permit, I E. They gotta come back and do a final development plan. Um, which is again what we had them, we needed them to do for the special use permit anyway. Um, there's some additional storage happening on the property. Um, and so we added the condition more as a caveat, if anything, that if there was any, if this were to move forward with a change of zone, it would still potentially need. A special use permit for such storage if that happened outside the building or was included a certain type of storage. We just don't really know. Um, what it is, we have to work through that. And then there's some standard conditions about downward lighting, uh, that we added accordingly if you want to move forward, uh, with approval. So staff happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I'll keep this brief. Um, but as we're looking at these photos, this just goes back to an argument I tried to raise a couple of months ago when this first came in front of us. Um, when the whole change of zone issue happened and we decided to hold it over. I still, when you look at these buildings, don't understand how we can argue that it's R one. I mean, I get that it's a former school. I, and all that, and it's in a residential area. I have a former school on my street, but when you drive by and you look at these buildings. I don't think anyone in the public is gonna sit here and say, that's a residential home that someone lives in. I mean, just look at the photos on your screen. But I know that's a point I've made in the past and just had to remake it.
All right, thank you. Other questions or statements for the staff? Commissioner Jones?
Real quick, Gunner, maybe I missed it. So how do we get to the point with current encroachment? And you know, your point about, well, this is just further encroachment. How, how did that come about?
So there's two things here. Uh, sorry, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. There's two things here. There is no area master plan for this community. We've never had a conversation with these neighbors holistically from an advanced planning perspective about what their vision for the future is. Which is why stuff like this happens on a per, per parcel basis. So if we turn this large parcel on the corner of this property here to red. That would be a further encroachment of non-residential uses into this very small and albeit sort of confined and constrained, um, residential neighborhood. Um, but again, I think the point to think here is larger and in the future, if we rezone this to C three and commercial, um, you could build a bid box store right here. You could build a, you could build all kinds of commercial uses, um, that you would more typically see along Cod Drive or elsewhere. Automobile-oriented related. You could have a dealership here. You got all kinds of stuff here. I'm not saying it would happen, but. Again, from, from staff's perspective, we're looking beyond what is being asked of, by this applicant to what could happen if rezoned. And land use designation changes far into the future. And we think it's an encroachment into what was historically a residential neighborhood. It still is. Again, you remove the school from that residential neighborhood, it's still a large parcel that could be used for, um, residential development.
Further questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Anyone? Anyone need further clarifications by the director?
I do. So, so Gunner, is there any way, and still, I mean, can we like, uh. Hold the request? Is there any plan for a master plan amendment, uh, master plan for the area?
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Um. Currently, no, we're in the process of, I think. We intend to move as fast as we can to do master plans or area plans in areas that do not have area plans, including the Riverside neighborhood. Sort of south of I seventy, if you will, towards the river. Um, it's still years away. So I think my larger point is that we, we haven't really had a conversation about what all the neighbors want. Again, through this action, they got noticed and we got no response. So we could take that for what it is as well.
Okay.
Okay, real quick. Do you have any short recommendations, Dan? So in.
Recommend denial.
And then just, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
Well, and I was just gonna follow up essentially kind of this same point that Commissioner Jones has is. Uh, you know, we're talking about this encroachment piece. Um, and I'm not necessarily saying I'm for this or against this, but as someone who grew up here, thinking of that area, that area has always kind of been industrial in a way of, in essence. You know, we've had all these talks about Armoredale. It's a lot like Armoredale where it's got kind of a mixed use. Um, and just, and my, I mean, I personally am supportive of proving this simply because. The. I, I feel like the neighbors would rather have an indoor skate park next to their house than they would Amazon or Blue Hat Crane, which they already have. And they've already been, they've already seen there. I mean. Amazon and indoor skate park is a little bit of a difference and we threw Amazon right down their throat. And now we're gonna uphold it indoor skate park. Just to me, that's why I'm in favor of it.
Just to be clear, the indoor skate park was approved and is in operation in the school building right now. So the property is being used.
Other questions for the director? Mister Hutton, did you have a, uh, clarification? Okay. Going back to Commissioner, Commissioner Mueller.
If one were to, uh, advance this, would it be two votes or just the one under the C O Z and the N P L?
It would be two.
Two motions, yeah. Master plan then change of zone.
Okay, but there's no master plan there? Did I hear that?
Uh, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Currently, it is for single-family homes. Uh, category exactly is, uh. Lost my place, I'm sorry. Single family, it's going from R one single-family district to C P three planned commercial. That's the zone. The master plan amendment is from low-density residential to community commercial.
Thank you. I, I'll make a motion to approve C O Z twenty twenty-one dash zero two-nine and N P L twenty twenty-one dash zero one-eight with staff stipulation.
Okay, I'm gonna need a motion for each one. Is that correct, Janet, separately?
It is correct. We need to take the master plan first, please.
All right, Commissioner Mueller, would you wanna make a motion to approve the master plan amendment?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion on, on the motion for approval on the master plan amendment? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Huey.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment, subject to the conditions stated by staff. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Okay, and now I need a motion on the change of zone request.
I will reiterate my original C O Z twenty twenty-one dash zero two-nine.
Okay, that motion is for. Motion to approve, uh, the change of zone, uh, request made by Commissioner Mueller. Is there a second?
Need to look at two steps.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Huey.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone application, subject to the conditions stated by staff. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January sixth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, we have, uh, two more applications that we're gonna hear together. Master plan amendment M P, N P L twenty twenty-one dash zero two-one Eric Fletcher. Master plan amendment from single-family residential to general urban Rosedale area master plan. At forty-four sixty-one Eaton Street. And change of zone application C O Z twenty twenty-one dash zero three-seven Eric Fletcher. Change of zone from R one single-family district to R three townhouse district. To bring existing non-conforming triplex into compliance at forty-four sixty-one Eaton Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, the notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact disclosed with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fletcher, uh, got you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please. And if you could briefly tell us what you want to do. I know we heard it at the Board of Zoning Appeals and you do have a bad connection, so um, let us know what you'd like to do.
Okay, I'll make this briefly. Uh, Eric Fletcher, resident forty four sixty one Eaton Street, apartment number two, Kansas City, Kansas six six one zero three. Mentioned at the Board of Zoning meeting, I went ahead and purchased this property back in June. Uh, I discovered shortly thereafter that it was incorrectly zoned uh, as a single family residential. Uh, it's been an operating triplex for uh, sixty plus years. And I would like to go ahead and uh, update the zoning to uh, a triplex to represent its current um, use. Um, please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Folks, please remember, uh, once I open the public portion of the meeting for a case, once I close that and go to Director Hand, I cannot go back to the public. So if you're going to speak when I call you, that's when it's time to raise your hand. Anyone want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case? Please raise your hand. Okay, Erin Strika, go ahead. I've got you ready to go.
Hi, uh, this is Erin Strika with Rosedale Development Association at fourteen oh three Southwest Boulevard. Um, just wanted to note that I, I have some concerns about rezoning this property to R three in the middle of an R one block like this. Um, I see in the staff notes that they're using a different definition of spot zoning than the one I'm familiar with. Um, from my perspective, the Rosedale master plan designates this area as single family. Um, and that plan was developed with lots and lots of community input and thought. That said, I haven't heard any objections from any of the immediate neighbors and I understand the property is operated like this without issues for fifty years. I also think it's really reassuring that the applicant resides there and is part of the community. So my only uh, request would be that um, in the staff notes, it states that if the building is ever demolished, that it be rebuilt in a way that's congruent with the single family nature of the block. And I would just ask if it's possible to add that if the building is ever demolished and rebuilt, that it revert to R one zoning and that the master plan amendment be revoked. Um, so that the, the master plan, land use plan for that block is restored over the long, long term.
We can, we can make that request of staff to see if that's possible. Anything else, Erin?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get Director Hand's comments.
Mr. Chair, this is going to hand Director Planner Design. Again, this case is being, or is being heard in conjunction with both the case twenty twenty, twenty twenty one zero four two, which the Board of Zoning Appeals approved earlier this month, uh, earlier this evening. For own, for a reduced parking count of four and that none of that parking need to be covered. We, we discussed some of those conditions of approval, which are also carried over to conditions of approval for this change of zone. Um, but again, this is a essentially legal non-conforming uh, use, not really a legal non-conforming structure in the Rosedale area master plan. It's right on the corner. On a corner lot. Again, it doesn't maintain the appearance of a single family neighborhood, a single family home that was converted over time. Uh, a couple of decades, a few decades ago, uh, the condition of approval that Ms. Strika noted was that if uh, you know, something catastrophic were to happen and the building would burn down. Um, or if the applicant wanted to tear down the building and build something new, the condition we had applied with that it had to match the um, single family uh, character of the neighborhood. We, we signaled the intent through that condition of approval and we require a plan review of whatever comes our way by making it RP three. Um, so I think our bases are covered. Uh, staff would be amenable to changing that condition of approval. Um, if the um, if the planning commission wanted to move forward with the recommendation from the Rosedale Development Association, uh, again, just a couple more of our conditions of approval, so I can state it on the record here. Specifically, um, are that, uh, we are asking that they repair and improve uh, the sidewalk. They do need a right of way uh, permit. And to rebuild the driveway apron to UG standards. Um, the parking lot does need to be an improved surface. It is currently gravel. It needs to be asphalt, concrete. Although in the staff report, we did say we would encourage the applicant and do encourage the applicant to think through a more permeable pavement like, like uh, pavers, for instance. Um, but that is not required by code. There are no NOBs. We did receive some letters of support. We received no letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, once again, we will require two motions, one for the master plan and, and one for the change of zone in that order. Uh, and at this time, if there is no discussion or questions, I will stand for those motions. Commissioner Jones?
Uh, motion to approve master plan two zero two one dash zero two one subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to, go ahead.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, point of, point of clarification. Um, I'm double checking the staff report right now. If number three was the condition. Yeah, that was written incorrectly. So we would ask that we make a change. Uh, I apologize, um, Commissioner Jones. We would ask that we make a change to condition number three to either reflect what Aaron Striker noted and I could read that back to you, or it should say not multifamily properties, but single family nature of the neighborhood. So we can do two things. We can revert if something catastrophic were to happen, um, and the building had to go down, or I think that I think it would be better to stick with the single family nature of the community of the neighborhood. Because if we said something like catastrophic failure, um, that would still create the space for the applicant or future owner of the property to tear down and build a triplex. Again, we would have reviewing, we would be able to review it because it's a planned district and we would have this condition of approval, but you know, again, I think we need to make sure that we're maintaining the single family character of the neighborhood, even though this has been a multifamily use within that neighborhood for quite some time. So we would amend the subject, number three, to say subject to approval and should the property be completely demolished? The future use of this property's reconstruction must follow the Rosedale master plan for single family properties.
So Commissioner Jones, are you amenable to those additional steps, stipulations, recommendations?
I am with that explanation and so I will amend it to say, uh, with my, I will amend my motion to amend it. This, the uh, staff stipulations and comments, amending number three from multifamily to single family.
In accordance with the Rosedale master plan.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Armstrong, is that a second from you?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Muller? Is that a? You have a comment?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be on the master plan and so roll call, please, Janet.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this master plan amendment subject to the revised conditions passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I'll take a motion on the change of zone. Mr. Jones?
Motion on the change of zone two zero two one dash zero three seven, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
All right. Thank you. That motion's for approval made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on motion to approve changes on? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification that is subject to the revised conditions of the staff, correct?
Thank you. That was my assumption, but Commissioner Jones, for clarification for, and for the record, that it does include the additional stipulations from the earlier motion on the master plan. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for getting it in the record, Janet.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone application subject to the revised conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. This will be heard once again on January sixth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck to you.
Mr. Chairman, we have two more items that we're going to hear together. Master plan amendment, MPL twenty twenty one dash zero three zero. John Pringer with A and J Freedom Properties LLC. Master plan amendment from urban density to mixed use, central area master plan at thirty one fifty nine Orville Avenue. And change of zone application COZ twenty twenty one dash zero three nine. Change of zone from R one B, single family district to TND, traditional neighborhood design district for an existing non-conforming three unit residential building at thirty one fifty nine Orville Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact that is closed with regard to this case?
No. Mr. Pringer? Are you in the audience? Please raise your hand. Anyone representing the applicant, please raise your hand. Okay, Joe, I've got you uh, queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name, please, and your address.
Good evening. It's Joe Pringer at one zero eight zero nine Northeast one hundred and six Terrace, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one five seven.
Okay, go ahead and tell us about your project, please.
Yeah, so I purchased this property um, in February of twenty twenty one and it um, from my knowledge, has been um, a, I guess, triplex of sorts um, for quite a while now. I've got three tenants that are currently living there. One has been in there ten years, one seven and one four years. I went to get a um, rental license and at that time was told that it was out of zoning. Um, so I went to the uh, sitting city planning commission to see if I could get it changed from an R one to a uh, essentially a TND because of the additional space that is on the ground level uh, that is kind of a storage area. But in addition to that, it would help with keeping the tenants that are currently in there that um, I provide affordable housing to into their respective units, you know, as, as long as they would like.
Okay. Anything else?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to committee, uh, sorry, Director Hand for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is going to hand Director Planner Design again. This uh, this case is being heard. Um, this change of zone is being heard in conjunction with master plan amendment twenty twenty one zero three zero. Again, we're looking to go to TND and mixed use. This is a essentially legal non-conforming parcel. It's one of those in the central area. It is one of those kind of corner markets that are in some of our older areas. Um, the applicant has, has just noted is looking to turn it into additional units of commercial, but to fit the character of the neighborhood, fit the intent of the building and to provide greater flexibility, it could be all residential, it could be mixed use. Um, we, we are seeking uh, this change of zone for kind of more of a permanent solution for this property in the long term. Um, what you see directly to the east is a piece of land adjacent uh, uh, on the parcel where the applicant would be providing some uh, some additional parking on site. Uh, again, TND does not require any parking, so this is above and beyond code standards. But again, it does meet sort of the character of the neighborhood and what the intended use is for the applicant. We do ask that they build a sidewalk along Orville. I think we said four foot sidewalk, if I remember correctly. And that that's, and that that, um, that any parking provided on site be an improved surface. Again, improved surface in our code means asphalt or concrete, um, but we have been um, increasing the type of, or what we do allow. And so we would encourage, but not require uh, the applicant to think about uh, pavers in, in regards to our stormwater issue in unified government. Um, there's additionally some conditions of approval in here about advanced landscaping around the site. Um, we've received, uh, there are some old NOBs on the property. Uh, we received no letters in support or opposition to date. Uh, a couple more pictures. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Uh, we'll need two, one on the master plan and one for changes up in that order. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve master plan amendment two zero two one dash zero three zero, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Muller, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment subject to the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And now change of zone, please. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the change of zone two zero two one dash zero three nine, subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Muller, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application subject to the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January sixth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, our, our next application is change of zone COZ twenty twenty one dash zero four zero. Lorenzo Garcia, change of zone from R one B, single family district to AG agriculture district for agricultural uses at thirty seven forty North Thirty Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, are you in the audience? Please raise your hand so I can call on you. Thank you. Go ahead. Please give us your name and address and tell us about your project.
Uh, my name's Lorenzo Garcia and I, my residence is fourteen twenty North Thirty Sixth Street, Kansas City, Kansas six six one one two. I'm actually calling uh, in for regards into my dad, which is Lorenzo Garcia. Only it's my sister, the one that's into the meetings and stuff, but they were not able to make it today. Uh, the reason why we're calling is to change the agricultural land that we have at thirty seven forty North Thirty Fifth Street. And the reason it's that is so we are able to have a horse, like I said, and uh, some chickens and some goats and everything there for uh, for the animals, obviously, so we can be compliant with the city. We've been working, obviously, uh, when we first got there, we didn't have the full acres. We've bought a little bit more of the property and stuff in that area. We're kind of in a dead end street and we've been able to now finally zone everything together to make it to the five acres. So we are able to have our animals. Uh, we've been learning to So we are able to have our animals. We've been learning to clean up the area. And there's also some old structures and stuff there that we are hoping that if we do get this zoning to agriculture, we can able to remove those and have more of a suitable place and everything for the animals because our buildings are pretty old. They've been down there for quite a bit sometime. And yeah, we're like here for anything, comments or anything else that we need to move forward so we can get this rezoned.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone tonight want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, El Nora Jefferson, please give us your name and address for the record and give us your, I'm sorry, and go ahead, please.
My name is El Nora Jefferson.
Yes, ma'am.
And I live in Kansas City, Kansas. I'm not speaking in opposition so much to Mr. Garcia. I know he's been doing it quite a bit to aggregate this land, but the opposition that I'm speaking to is basically it has to do with the Northeast Area Master Plan. While this area, this location is not in the Northeast Area Master Plan. Within the Northeast Area Master Plan, it does talk about reinvestment in the Quinidero area. The Quinidero area, according to a document that was co-authored by a Mr. Larry, I want to, I may have mispronounced his name, but I want to say Hawks. And along with the late Meredith Robert Schrader speaks to the Quinidero Townsite as extending from 17th Street to 42nd Street and from the Missouri River to parallel. So therefore, Mr. Garcia's land would be there inside the town site. There's a lot of designations in this area where we're talking about the Quinidero Historical District, the other historical monuments and so forth. So for clarity, I'm asking this body to not approve this application until there can be a clarification of of what the master plan is really saying as far as reinvestments in the Quinidero Townsite. Thank you.
You have a specific question about the master plan?
The the question that I had is what is the master plan really saying? Is it saying that the reinvestment is in the Quinidero Townsite or not? And then more to the point is the definition of the Quinidero Townsite as it is related, as it is, you know, related to the Northeast Area Master Plan.
Okay, we'll see if we can get you some answers. All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to Mr. Rob? Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Barry Anderson? Mr. Anderson? Go ahead and unmute yourself, Mr. Anderson.
Unmute, okay. I'm, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm basically wanted to have some input in this in regard to whether or not there's going to be an increase. I've made several calls in the last three to five years since there's been a great influx of property acquisition, of real estate acquisition in the area. And I'm wanting to know from the Garcia family if there are going to be an increase of the use, of the illegal use of firearms in the area. Because of the sake of property owners and owners that have livestock in that area. I've made several calls to the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department in regard to that particular area on Soder and all the way to the end of Bell Crossing, the illegal burnings and the illegal use of firearms. I made several calls, and I'm wanting to know from the Garcia family if they're going to have in addition to the use of illegal use of firearms that just fire at will, firing at will.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, are you, are you, are you aware of any situations involving illegal burning or any illegal use of firearms at that structure, property?
At that property? No. In the area, yes.
Okay, so I don't know how we can answer your question, sir, other than the fact that there has not been any, any issues with that property, correct? They're here tonight to talk about keeping a leaf's livestock, a horse, pony, cow, goat, sheep, chickens, and ducks.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm listening in, so at this time I will mute myself. And I'll just continue to contact the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department. If we gain resources, we're respecting them arriving, as I call them, in a timely manner to attempt to help us stop the illegal use of firearms in that area.
I completely understand your concerns, Mr. Anderson. I just don't know how they pertain to this particular case before us tonight.
Well, sir, how it pertains is the illegal use of firearms, the the other people that are already there that
I know, sir, but they're not, they're not, they're not germane to this case. That's the only thing I can, I can say to you, sir.
Okay, sir, well, I'm sorry for raising my hand.
No, you're absolutely fine. Thank you. Okay, Marvin Robinson?
Did I unmute?
Yes, you're good. Go ahead, please, sir.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate the concern that Mrs. El Nora Jefferson had expressed. And then being a Navy vet myself, I would like to just say hello and thank you to Mr. Barry, who's also a decorated veteran. As we try to go forward, I, this that I'm looking at on the screen doesn't show like a map or a boundary, but it appears that it may be in the area of Bell Crossson.
Does that map help you out, sir?
I don't see a map.
Oh, are you on?
Yeah, I can, I can see a map now.
Okay.
But the the thing that I'm getting at is Bell Crossson is a part of the sub-tier of the Quinidero Townsite potential national historic landmark. And it's more than likely going to be archaeological deposits over in that corridor as well. And I heard Mr. Garcia, I believe that was his name, saying there were some older structures. And being that there are older structures there, we used to be able to use Section 106 to have archaeological surveys done to be conducted to determine if there were any historical properties or structures remaining from that time period. Because as Mrs. as Mrs. Jefferson said, the site goes from 18th Street of the Missouri River to 42nd Street of the Missouri River over to Peralo Parkway, what is now Peralo Parkway. And even though we're only dealing with the 56 acres that the Unified Government has for the National Historic Landmark, this seems to create sealing off and limiting expanding the historic preservation area. And if there are older structures, he admitted and said that there were older structures. How do we know that they don't go back to the mid 1850s? And in any event, we have, we have a major site in play, and then we went through all of that. The city spent $50,000, I believe, on a Northeast Master Plan. And it seems like even with the master plan, and I asked them to name it a strategic plan, a tactical plan, a toolkit, because I don't like the word master plan, but they went on and did $50,000 for a master plan, and it doesn't seem to have any adherence to the continuation of having to repeat the recital of the importance of the area. And so that would be my only concern is Section 106 exists, and I haven't heard anybody say anything about the historic heritage. If this is in the Bell Crossson area, it extremely is related to the big picture of the Quinidero Townsite. So that's all I needed to say, and thanks so much for allowing me these few seconds.
Of course, and we will see if we can get you some answers to your concerns along with Ms. Ms. Jefferson's. Thank you.
How do I, how do I mute myself again?
I'll take care of it.
Okay, appreciate you. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll now go to Director Hand. Well, first of all, I want to go back to Mr. Garcia. You're still with us, correct?
Yeah, I'm still here to follow up on one of those questions of the old structures. They are just chicken coops. Like I'm saying, like, they're not actual structures. I refer to them as to that. They're just like sheds and everything where the animals go and sleep pretty much. It's nothing like structurally that's been there like a landmark. That's what I meant as in that, so I apologize for that. It's nothing really structured. Like I said, it's like an old chicken coop and a couple like type of kind of little barns that it's just where the animals kind of sleep and everything in there. That's all it is, though.
Okay, but do those structures predate anything, or are they?
No, they do not. No, they're just something else put up. Like I said, one's an old chicken coop, and the other one is just to provide some shelter for the animals.
Okay, also, could you just, just for clarification for Mr. Anderson's concerns, has there been any illegal burning or anything like that on your property during your ownership?
There has not been anything like, you know, there's never been the police or anything called. Everybody in the area knows my father. There's never been any illegal shooting or anything like that. We have heard, obviously, in the area, but nothing in our property that's ever happened, anything like that. It's very family orientated with the place we go and hang out and everything with our family, and that's pretty much all it's used for.
All right, I appreciate that clarification. We'll now go to Director Hand and get his comments. And could you please address the questions regarding the master plan and how that, how the Quinidero archaeological sites and the historic nature of the area pertain to this case?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, before us, a change of zone from R1 to AG, it does meet the five acre minimum for agricultural zoning. This is in the Soder Drive area. It is, yes, adjacent to the Quinidero Townsite. Of the property itself abuts the Northeast Area Master Plan, but is not within the Northeast Area Master Plan. It is just outside of Northeast Area Master Plan, and that's more semantics than it is really meaningful other than to say that this area, again, has been a big target for us at the Unified Government for code enforcement issues. One of the resolutions to all those code enforcement issues is to, again, assemble property to more than five acres and turn them into agricultural uses and manage those properties this way, which is what's happening in this case moving forward. Again, you can see some of these accessory structures on the property. There is, again, no primary structure on the property, so those are all violations. There is an old notice of violation from, I believe, 2018, 2019-ish, addressing this issue and seeking for it to be cleaned up accordingly. There's a couple pictures from the applicant in terms of what they hope to do in terms of new structures. We have asked them to remove all the dilapidated structures and/or seek retroactive building permits for any structures that are to remain or to be built on the property if zoned, if moving forward with this case. The Conservation District did develop a conservation plan, which I'll show you as I walk through some of the question, pictures we have from the site visit. Those conditions as it relates to the Conservation District are included in the conditions of approval accordingly. Again, I mentioned the NOV. Thus, before tonight, we had received nothing in writing in support or opposition. Staff recommends approval. What I can say about the historic structure is that this property is neither within historic district landmark or their environs. There was a recent MOU in the last year that was signed between one of the major property owners of the Quinidero Townsite and the Unified Government. They are working to figure out next steps on how to move forward with improving Quinidero Townsite into a more recognized, more expansive, archaeological, and all the things that go with it. But that work has not moved forward. I don't really know exactly how to respond to Ms. Jefferson's question other than to say it's not in a historic district or its environs. That doesn't mean necessarily that the land that the applicant is on right now wasn't once a part of the Quinidero Townsite. It very well could be. We just don't know.
So with regard to the question on reinvestment, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact quote about the master plan where it talks about reinvestment is, so it would not apply in this case because it's not within that. Does not meet, does not meet the standard of being within that that area, correct?
Currently, the focus for the Quinidero Townsite is defined within a specific geographic area that was a part of the memorandum of understanding between the Unified Government and the property owner, the former Western University land ownership holdings. And that does not include this property.
All right. All right, thank you. Questions for the director? Commissioner Jones?
I just want to make sure, Gunner, with what you said, I know this will be going back and it's getting late, but I would want to know from Mrs. Jefferson if she understands what Director Hand is saying and whether or not she has, is that resolving her concern, or does she have any other concerns or recommendations pertinent to this case?
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. I don't think it addresses Ms. Jefferson's concerns specifically. I'm all ears if there is something specific to be considered related to this case. But there are no, again, the structures on this property are as the applicant described and verified by staff on their site visit. They're basically, you know, put together shacks for purposes of agricultural. And again, we're asking that those be removed because they are not sound structures and that they be built to code and seek building permits. We didn't see any old foundations. That doesn't mean they don't exist underneath the soil somewhere, but again, we also have a code requirement and a condition of approval that if any grading were to happen on the property, it has to go through a permit process as well with us, so that we do have checks and balances.
Basically, to be clear, we're just saying that this is the, Mr. Garcia, as a landowner, as long as he's in compliance with code and existing ordinances, can do what he chooses to with the property depending on how we rule on this case for change of zone.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the Director? Commissioner Muller?
I simply want to make a motion.
Go ahead, sir.
Make a motion to approve COZ 2021-040, staff stipulation.
I have motion to approve made by Commissioner Muller. Is there a second? Is that a second, Commissioner Miller?
Second.
All right, is there a discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Yui?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone 40, subject to the staff's conditions, passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January 6th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners. And I would like to thank both of the veterans who spoke tonight for their service. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we now have three items that we're going to hear together and vote on separately. Master Plan Amendment, MPL 2021-029, John Simpson with VHC Rhodes. Master Plan Amendment from public, semi-public to community commercial at 1150 North 38th Street. Change of zone application, COZ 2021-041. Change of zone from R1B, single family district, to CPO, planned non-retail business district to split office from cemetery property. And preliminary and final plat, plat 2021-025, preliminary and final plat for two commercial lots, and it's the Mount Calvary Cemetery plat. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December 13, 2021. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the one dot echo for the change of zone and master plan amendment and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, go ahead and give us your name and address and tell us what we're doing here.
G'day, Will Anderson, 712 State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, with VHC. The issue is that the cemetery on the corner of 38th and State Avenue on the northwest corner is currently full. And so the use of the building that we're talking about discussing is no longer required to support the operation of cemetery. The operation of cemetery. So the owners, the diocese is looking to separate the. The building from the cemetery and uh change the zoning to suit the. The proposed action so that they can sell it off and get use out of the building. So that's what it's all about. The change of zone is necessary because it's currently zoned. Um, as R one B that's in conjunction, as is the cemetery to convert it across to C P O. Um, and more suitable for the action within the building. So um, open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Mr. Matt Watkins.
Uh Commissioners, um I come in support of this application. I represent the Arcs Diocese in the Cemetery Association and we are looking to. Um, make that building a little more uh appeal or available to the public, so I would really appreciate your support here.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Urban Design. Uh again, yes, this case is right on the edge of the Northeast Area Master Plan at thirty-eighth and State. Um, you can see it here. It's kind of a not exactly a rectangle. They're trying to pull out this part of the portion, which is the old office. For the now full Catholic cemetery. You can see it in the um plat, final plat here. It does include that final plat does include an access agreement, which is one of the conditions of approval. Um, it shares the driveway to get to both this um commercial property lot two that they're proposing. As well as the rest of the parcel. You can see right here, here's the driveway and then it accesses parking associated with um formerly associated with cemetery. So that access drive still needs to be maintained. Um, an access agreement still needs to be maintained to access this parcel through that driveway. Uh accordingly, um you can see a couple of pictures of the site here. Um, Steph does have a couple of conditions of of approval related to this. Um, again, we are. Sorry, I lost my place again. Long agenda tonight. Um, we are asking that they re-strengthen resurface the parking lot. Um, we are asking that they make a direct pedestrian connection to the sidewalk from the front door of the building. We do ask for a little bit of landscaping. I mentioned the access agreement. There have been no NOVs. Before tonight, we've heard we received no letters of support and opposition. I apologize. I did not hear Mr. Watkins and his comments. I'm assuming it was in support.
Yes.
But I apologize, I couldn't. I had a little sound issue on my end. Um, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for the Director? Seeing none, Janet, clarifying, we need three motions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Master Plan Change of Zone and a plat?
That's correct.
In that order?
Yes, sir.
I'm getting there. Thank you, Janet. Okay, uh Commissioner Armstrong.
Uh, I move to approve the master plan um with uh staff comments and stipulations.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the master plan amendment subject to staff stipulations. Any, is there a second? Is that a second by Commissioner Muller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, this is on the master plan. Janet, thank you. Commissioner Muller, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I. Thought it was Miller.
Yeah, I I missed, I didn't hear Commissioner Miller.
I'm sorry, I got a mess messed up. Miller?
No, I, okay, I thought I said it. I.
Muller.
Muller?
There we go.
Armstrong?
I.
Uy?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of master plan twenty-nine, subject to the conditions of staff. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion on the change of zone, Commissioner Armstrong.
Move to approve the change of zone um with staff stipulations and comments.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Armstrong. Commissioner Muller, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Uy?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone forty-one. Subject to the conditions of staff passes. Five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. See how much smoother it goes when I stay out of it. Okay, now, uh Commissioner Armstrong, is that a motion for the plat?
Yes, I move to approve the plat subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Commissioner Armstrong on the plat. Is that a second Commissioner Muller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Uy?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the plat, subject to the staff's conditions passes. Five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, January sixth, seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we now have three applications that we're gonna hear together and vote on separately. Master Plan Amendment, M P L twenty twenty-one dash zero two three. Sherry Gayen with Friendship Inn. Master Plan Amendment from Urban Mixed Use. To General Urban, Rosedale Master Plan at forty-four oh three Rainbow Boulevard. Change of Zone Application COZ twenty twenty-one dash zero four one. Change of Zone from R one, Single Family District to R three Townhouse District. For seventeen unit building for Friendship Inn for family members and guests of patients at the University of Kansas. Health Systems and Special Use Permit S P twenty twenty-one dash zero seven four. Special Use Permit for a seventeen unit building for Friendship Inn. For family members and guests of patients at the University of Kansas Health Systems. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachment dated December thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. Inference of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the one dot echo. The notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Gayad, can you raise your hand for me? There we go. Thank you. And I've got you set up to speak also, Mr. Roseman. So if you could, please start off, give us your names, addresses, and go ahead and tell us again about this project.
Good evening again. Sherry Guide with Friendship Inn forty-one forty-six State Line Road. Um, I previously during uh B Z A gave you all a brief background of Friendship Inn, so I won't spend. Um, some time reviewing that. It is a nonprofit organization providing um temporary lodging for patients and their guests. Receiving long-term treatment um at the University of Kansas Health System. Um, we are requesting a change of zoning from R one to R three, a special use permit and a master plan amendment. Um, we are located at forty-four oh three Rainbow Boulevard, which is a more commercial corridor of Rainbow. And we are in conformity with the higher density that is requested in the Rosedale Master Plan. Now, before I turn it over. Discuss the design and. That the. Are subject to change as we continue to work through the process. And there is one item specifically. Um, is the use of brick. The donor on this project has expressed a desire. Um, that the use of brick as the primary material for the project. And we would request the approval this evening be made with the caveat that we. Uh, will continue to work with staff and develop a quality elevation for the facility that meets the Rosedale Master Plan. The U G and Friendship Inn's goals. And if staff feels that the architectural changes are in excess of what uh they can approve administratively. We will submit a revised P D P. Um, with our final application that will go to the Board of Commissioners again. Um, once we have finalized the elevations of of the building. Um, additionally, we um and I'll have Dawn go over some of this as well. Um, we would ask a reconsideration on a couple of the conditions. One being, I believe, it's item number six, the um bike share. Um, station located on the the location of the new Friendship Inn. Um, as I mentioned previously, as regards to, in regards to the parking, these are families that arrive together. So will not be taking any bike mechanisms to to the hospital. We also have. Some guests that will have oxygen tanks, so it's not. We don't believe it is the appropriate location for a for a bike share station. Um, we believe it would. Have more use in another, in another location. So um, and I believe Dawn had another, another comment that he'll review. With that, I will turn over to Dawn Roseman and then we will answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Don Roseman, fifteen twenty-six Grand Boulevard. I'll, I'll try to be brief. I think, you know, the major item that that we wanted to bring forth in our discussion today is. Is the request for the approval, as Sherry stated, with the understanding that, you know, the staff recommendation. Uh, I've set forth in the Rosedale Master Plan is for uh a minimum of forty percent of the exterior material to be of a quality material. And we, as the donor has requested, will will more than likely request additional brick usage on the building. Uh, we're in the process of just the designing of the of that portion, which we do not have anything to share with you tonight. But we will work with both staff and the neighborhood in order to come before the uh committee for a final approval. With it, with the elevation, with acceptance by everybody. Um, I think the only other item that that I want to address at this time is that there is a stipulation in the conditions. With regard to downspouts to be internalized and in keeping with both the guidelines of the Rosedale. Uh, neighborhood and with a residential character of a building. Uh, the gutters and downspouts would in fact be uh exterior mounted on the on the structure, so. We just asked for the, the condition is Sherry mentioned with the bike share uh along a, you know. Rainbow Boulevard, which is very commercialized, is probably not the best place to to have a. Uh, bike rack installed in front of the the structure and then secondarily dealing with the uh gutters and downtops. Otherwise, I'm available, happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the, I'm sorry, Ms. Gayad? Do you have, do you want to follow up?
Yes, sorry, I had one more item. I believe that the Rosedale Master Plan um also wanted covered parking in the back. And we are asking for a deviation on on that as well. Um, these, the cars are not um. Parked all day in um in the back of, in the parking lot. They are mostly parked at the hospital. So um therefore, it would seem more unsightly to have those carports rather than um. The green space with the uh with the parking lot open, which it will mostly be open during the day.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing then, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand at this time. Okay, we'll go to Sarah Wagner first.
Hello, um Sarah Wagner with Rosedale Development Association at fourteen oh three Southwest Boulevard. Um, Rosedale Development Association supports this project as an important step in implementing the Rosedale Master Plan. A few years ago, there was another proposal for this location that was much taller with more units and not. In alignment with the Rosedale Master Plan and during the neighborhood meeting for this proposal. This one um today, there was a lot of support for this project and relief to see that it's an appropriate height and scale for the neighborhood. So we think this use and the zoning is in line with what's envisioned um for Rainbow Boulevard in the Rosedale Master Plan.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing then, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Urban Design. Again, the applicant and some of the uh members of the public to address the case, and we did go through this at the Boza. Again, this is her being heard in conjunction with those a case twenty twenty-one dash zero two three. Uh, that was heard earlier this evening. Um. Uh, again, this is in the Rosedale Area Master Plan just south of um. Forty-third Avenue along Rainbow Boulevard, forty-third Avenue in um the Rosedale Area Master Plan is sort of a node of development, a neighborhood node. So it does call for sort of increasing density um as you approach forty-third and Rainbow from either forty-third Avenue or Rainbow Boulevard. So in that sense, a more intensive use, we do believe it meets um the Rosedale Area Master Plan. But it does specifically call for a mixed-use corridor, and this is a specifically residential corridor. So. From an intensity standpoint, yes. From a use standpoint, although um it's not exactly spot on because we are. Requesting a master plan amendment for mixed use to um general urban. Sorry, I'm gonna make sure I got that right. Um, it does speak to an increase in density towards that, towards that intersection, towards that neighborhood node. And future potential mixed-use development uh uh adjacent or maybe approximate to that specific uh intersection. Just a couple of things that we would note um as it relates to the design of the project. Um, again, the multifamily design guidelines uh and the Rosedale multifamily design guide do have a material requirement. It's a minimum. So to do it all brick, I think, doesn't necessarily violate the the uh intent of the materiality clause in the design guidelines thereof. The second deviation that was requested uh would require um a covered parking. On the spaces adjacent to the single-family neighborhood directly to the east. The intent of that design guideline was really to create greater screening. And separation between a higher intensity use in single-family neighborhoods. So in lieu of that deviation, we would ask for additional screening, maybe uh landscaping, enhanced landscaping along that edge. Um, it does call for a fence to be built around the property, so that is happening, but but again, we might want to think about perhaps some sort of enhanced. Uh, screening slash landscaping uh to meet that intent if we do move away from that. If the planning commission decides to move away and deviate from that standard in the design guidelines. Um, regarding the bike share station, Steph thinks this is the perfect place for a bike location. We are not asking that it be associated with the use. We are asking that the applicant lay down a concrete pad so that we. Um, can put bike racks, an information kiosk, and when the season allows. Our electric bike system, for those who aren't familiar, we did deploy fifty e-bikes in Rosedale this past year as a part of our pilot project. The general vicinity of forty-third Rainbow was a specific place where we were holding. Um, again, one of our bike hubs, if you will, um for future redevelopment, so we could get um. Uh, close to that intersection. We believe this is a perfect opportunity to do that. All we're asking is for that concrete pad to be placed adjacent to the sidewalk so that it is a publicly serving. Um, like share hub location. Again, we'll outfit it, we'll do everything, we'll manage it. We're just asking for the concrete pad. Ideally, as far north as possible uh on the property. Again, you can kind of see the one-way pattern of the of the of the, it's a loop, right? So you enter here, drive around and exit here. So if there was a concrete pit here or a concrete pit here, it might impact the sidewalks if it's south of their driveway, so maybe north of their driveway. Uh, we think it's a perfect location for a bike share station. We would ask um that that stay as a condition of approval. Um, again, there's some enhanced landscaping and other screening that we discussed. A final development plan, as the applicant mentioned, is required, so all of these changes, be they materiality and elevation. Uh, site design or other deviations, we can take that forward to the final development plan and fully realize those. There are some old NOVs on this property not related to this case. We have received some letters of support. We thus far received no letters in opposition. I'm gonna click through the rest of these slides, but staff recommends approval for um the master plan amendment, the change of zone. And approval for two years for the special use permit to operate the seventeen short-term rentals. Again, if you remember, the other Friendship Inn currently in operation, I believe they have an S U P for ten years, just got renewed. Um, we operate, we entitle it as if it's a short-term rental, and this is just seventeen short-term rentals in a building. Um, so we've worked closely with the applicants to make this thing look less like a hotel. and function like a hotel and make it look more fitting with a residential property accordingly. So happy to take any questions.
Questions for Director Han? I'm sorry, Gunnar, I, once again, master plan, change of zone and special use.
Correct.
That order?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Han or clarifications? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on the master plan amendment. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the master plan amendment two zero two one dash zero seven four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Did I cover everything, Gunnar? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mueller, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the master plan amendment. So just subject to staff stipulations and comments. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Yui?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of master plan amendment twenty-three, subject to the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Okay, now entertain a motion on the change of zone. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the change of zone two zero two one dash zero four three, subject to staff stipulations.
A motion to approve the change of zone made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Mueller, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the change of zone? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Yui?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change zone forty-three, subject to the conditions of staff passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And now I need a motion on the special use permit. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve special use permit two zero two one dash zero seven four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, I'm sorry, that motion was, can you go ahead and restate the motion? You kind of cut out there, Commissioner Jones.
Our motion to approve special use permit two zero two one dash zero seven four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, and for, what's the period of time for this special use permit? Two years? Thank you. Commissioner Mueller, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve has been made by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Mueller. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller? Mueller?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Yui?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of special use permit seventy-four for two years, subject to the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Good, thank you. This will be heard once again January sixth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications we're going to hear together. Change of zone application C O Z twenty twenty-one dash zero four five. Gilberto Gonzalez Guerrero. Change of zone from C one Limited Business District to C three Commercial District to accommodate a used car dealership with light repair and maintenance at seventy-five twelve Leavenworth Road. And special use permit application S P twenty twenty-one dash zero seven nine. Special use permit to accommodate a used car dealership with light repair and maintenance at seventy-five twelve Leavenworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report attachments dated December thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in accordance with the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the white dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Guerrero, are you in the audience, please? Raise your hand. Okay, sir, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project.
Hi, my name is Gilberto Gonzalez Guerrero. My address is seventy-five twelve Leavenworth Road, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh nine. This property, it's a current, a car wash, but I want, I want it turning into a used car dealership with light mechanic repair. And switch us out. Car detailing, light mechanic work and tire changing. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for this applicant? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, we're seeking a change of zone because auto dealerships and light auto work are not allowed in the C one zone. And those uses require a special use permit on top of them. This is in the midtown area just west of Washington High School. Along Leavenworth Road, you can kind of see a piece of Washington High School right here. As the applicant mentioned, this is a, it was, I suppose, an existing car wash that has already gone through some work. You can see the site plan here. Currently, with the site plan, we're working through some of the parking issues. You can see all the parking aligned here, but the bay doors remain. So it, we're still working through some stuff with the applicant. We can finalize this in building permits. So that's not the largest deal. But again, there's some questions about parking, some questions about adding wheel stops as a condition of approval. We do add conditions of approval standard to this type of use about no outside storage of salvaged vehicles. No work on any of the vehicles outside of the primary structure. The applicant has or someone has already done a lot of the commercial design guidelines to the building that we would ask for. Things like improving the siding and and other materials, which I'll show you a couple of pictures of here in just a second, working through this. We are asking that one of the two entrances be closed off, which is reflected in this site plan. There's two, the Leavenworth Sidewalk Project, road reconstruction project, hasn't made it this far quite yet. So you can see in this site plan that one, there's currently two access points on Leavenworth Road. This one reflects one being closed off with some additional landscaping. Again, working through some of the parking issues. There are some old NOVs on this property not related to this case. We do, I forgot to, behind the property is a separate parcel with some open space around it, so not associated with this project. But it does require access through the par- through the parcel to get to that property, just as a note. We received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval for two years. You can see some of the improvements already done to the building in this photo here.
Thank you. Any questions for the director?
Different property.
Any questions for the director? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. And we'll need to correct change of zone and special use. Special use for two years, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Armstrong.
Move to approve change of zone twenty twenty-one dash zero forty-five, subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Armstrong. Is that a second, Commissioner Mueller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Yui?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone forty-five, subject to the staff's conditions passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I entertain a motion on the special use permit, Commissioner Armstrong.
Um, I move to approve special use permit twenty twenty-one dash zero seven nine, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve made for the special use permit made by Commissioner Armstrong, seconded by Commissioner Mueller, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to approve the special use permit for two years? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller? Mueller?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Yui?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of special use permit seventy-nine for two years, subject to the staff's conditions passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January sixth, seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck to you.
Mr. Chairman, we now have three applications that we're going to hear together. Master Plan Amendment, M P L twenty twenty-one dash zero two seven. Matt Altrich with Choco Capital One L L C. Master Plan Amendment from Single Family to General Urban Roseville Area Master Plan at forty-one oh eight Adams Street. And change of zone application C O Z twenty twenty-one dash zero four six. Change of zone from R one B Single Family District to R two B Two Family District for two living units. Special use permit application S P twenty twenty-one dash zero seven six. Special use permit for short-term rental at forty-one oh eight Adams Street. Please include the following items for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in accordance with the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the white dot echo for the change of zone and master plan amendment and the notices to property owners. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note too that I did send an additional attachment out to the planning commission Friday afternoon after the packet went out. And it was information submitted by Aaron Striker, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Altrich, are you in the audience tonight? Would you please raise your hand so I can call on you? Thank you. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about this project.
My name is Matt Altrich and my address is two one five zero zero West Ninety-Nine Street in Lenexa, Kansas, six six two two zero. Thank you for hearing my case tonight. I am I own forty-one zero eight Adams Street in Kansas City, Kansas. This property was or has been a multifamily property for at least the past fifty years. And I would like to correct the zoning on it from R one to R P two. Right now, I have the bottom unit as leased long term. And I would like to have the option to lease the upstairs as well. The other part of my plan is to apply for a short-term license. Even though my goal for the property is to always lease both units long term, I believe it goes along with the Roseville master plan to offer diverse housing options. And this would allow staff members either working at K U Med or staff that are treating families of the Friendship Inn to stay here less than thirty days if needed. But as I spoke to my neighbors, whatnot, that would be on a rare occasion as my goal is to always have the house leased long term for for both units upstairs and down. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? And Devon Taran?
Well, thank you. This is Devon Taran. I live at forty-one twelve Adams, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh three. We're the the next door house of this property in question. Speaking kind of for ourselves and then also for the neighborhood. So I I live here with my wife and two daughters. Our concern is to maintain the family feel of the neighborhood. After talking with with Matt and talking more about having the community meeting and kind of what he was willing to do to make sure that that we were comfortable with it, we feel better about supporting especially his his use of the upstairs unit. We do believe there is a need for more variety of those kinds of units in our neighborhood. And he assured us that he would be really seeking out as stable of short-term renters as possible, which is a major concern to us. Our larger concern on behalf of the neighborhood and our block specifically is we have had several under the radar short-term rentals that have been negligent landowners. And Matt is not one of those. Matt takes very good care of his properties, but the larger concern from our neighborhood is making sure that we really keep under control the short-term rentals. And even this week, we lost a long-term renter neighbor to the increase of rents in the neighborhood. She couldn't keep up and had to leave Roseville completely. So that's absolutely a concern for our block, for our neighborhood. I believe that Matt is one of the landlords that will be present, will be doing the work. I was really impressed with his presence in the community meeting and his commitment to reading the Roseville Master Plan after that to see how it fit the spirit of the plan. We would support him in this, though I speak for my wife and I think many of our neighbors when we have larger concerns about how we do this kind of development within our our block and neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll go to Aaron Striker. Aaron?
This is Aaron Striker with Roseville Development Association at fourteen oh one Southwest Boulevard. Really want to second everything that Devon had to say. And then I'll just add that while I support what Matt is doing, I don't think rezoning is the appropriate way to accomplish it. I think it's great to have that upper unit rented, but I don't think that we should rezone this parcel to R two in the middle of an R one block. I think this really indicates that it's a problem that our zoning code doesn't have a better option than rezoning to address a pretty common housing configuration in Roseville where there's a single-family home with a granny flat or a mother-in-law suite or or some other kind of accessory dwelling unit. The Roseville Master Plan talks about the need for a specific zoning or designation for that configuration. And it hasn't happened yet. A couple of years ago, there was a home near this one that applied for R two zoning in order to have a mother-in-law suite for his mother-in-law to live in. He ended up withdrawing that application because he was told there would be a more targeted solution for them in the future. So in my opinion, rezoning R two is a short-term solution with really long-term impacts. And I would suggest that the application be held over until that better zoning solution can be found that that specifically designates a mother-in-law suite in a single-family home. I'm also concerned about the number of short-term rentals in Roseville. It's late and I know you've all heard those concerns many times. So I'll just say that I've heard from a lot of neighbors who are very concerned about that aspect of the proposal. And it's my understanding that the applicant intends to primarily rent the mother-in-law suite for ninety-plus days and just wants that short-term rental as an additional option. I think he said rare occasions tonight. Um, since a lot of neighbors would prefer he not have that option, and since it sounds like losing that option wouldn't have a major effect on his plans, I would oppose that special use permit. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Erin. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Raise your hand, please. Not seeing anyone else, we're going to close the public porch. The meeting will go back to staff and get their comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand director of Planning, excuse me, in Urban Design. Uh, again, what we have in front of us is a legal non-conforming, um, structure. Um, it had sometime in the fifties, we believe, added a, uh, true granny flat to the property. Um, but as Ms. Striker noted, without any specific allowance for accessory dwelling units currently in the code, the only option to allow a second unit on a property, especially one like this, which is attached, uh, is to essentially call it a duplex, even though it looks like a single-family home from the outside. Um, so the character very much fits in with the neighborhood. The use is sort of on top of it, if you will. Um, so with that, um, the, uh, if I apologize, move through. Again, this is in the Rosedale area, as we noted, off Adams Street, about a block away from the K U Met Center campus. Um, the applicant again is trying to use their property for what they bought it for, and they can't do that unless the zoning, uh, complies with it. So the other option, if we were to delay, is he could not use, um, rent out that second unit for an, an undetermined amount of time. Staff did just hire or seek, excuse me, is seeking to hire a, um, new position in the department zoning ordinances to address these very issues moving forward. Um, I can't give you a timeline on when that person might be hired, when that person might start, and when we might be able to get to short-term rentals as an issue, although it is, uh, recognized as a high priority, uh, issue, um, for this, uh, for this department. Um, we do, uh, uh, track short-term rentals in the neighborhood using a software. Um, non-compliant can mean either they don't have an S U P or their S U P is out of date. Some of these non-compliance will reflect as S U Ps that are in the process to get renewed and still be labeled as non-compliant. So this is not a perfect map of what's going on in the area, but we do know and we are well aware that there are both um, a lot of short-term rentals in Rosedale through special use permits, as well as a lot of short-term rentals that we are chasing, essentially constantly in the Rosedale community. Um, this is a couple of pictures of the house. The max, um, for the short-term rental currently, um, is five total and four off-street parking, although I would ask the, I would ask that to be confirmed by the, uh, applicant. That is a lot of people and a lot of cars for a granny flat on the second story. Um, just to confirm those numbers and make any adjustments as needed. Again, we do add some landscaping. Uh, uh, again, this is meant to allow the applicant to finish their project after purchasing the pro- property. There are no N O Bs on this property. We have received letters both in support and in opposition. In regards to the short-term rental, staff recommends approval for one year. Staff recommends approval for the change of zone and the master plan amendment as well.
Okay, questions for staff? Miss, um, Mr. Altrich, did you have a, you need a clarification?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, just to clarify, so the upstairs unit, um, when leased would only be leased to a single occupant. Um, I had the cars on there just to kind of demonstrate, um, how large a driveway is, but it is going to be just a single car on the, you know, on that property for the upstairs unit.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Go ahead, Gunnar.
Just, Mr. Chair's point of clarification, typically we will say like, uh, two per bedroom. Um, so if it's a one-bedroom, the short-term rental, and we do like to manage, um, through conditions, the amount of people that can use short-term rental at one time and the amount of cars that can be parked on property for a short-term rental at one time. So those conditions are specific to the special use permit. So if I'm hearing the applicant correct, we should change and amend those conditions to have a two-person max for the short-term rental and one-car max for the short-term rental, or is there more? Is there like a couch, a living room?
For the upstairs, it's just a single bedroom and the couch isn't a pullout, and so I'm perfectly fine. Um,
Two of one.
Because as I mentioned before to my neighbors and, you know, at the, you know, like, um, at the meeting, my intent is to really never to have that leased short-term. But if a family calls me and has, you know, has a child thing in the hospital and wants a place to stay for two weeks, or a physician's in town for a conference for a weekend, once a year, it's just nice to have the flexibility and the option to lease it that way. Um, but the intent is only to advertise it for ninety days or longer for stays, um, generally to traveling healthcare workers. Um, and even those, uh, normally single occupants anyway. Um, so yeah, for the upstairs unit, I am perfectly fine, you know, being generous and, you know, saying two cars, but quite frankly, there's going to be one.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, Gunnar Hand director of Planning and Design, we would ask that the conditions be amended then to reflect a maximum number of guests of what I'm hearing again from the applicant is two and a maximum number of off-street parking again specifically for the short-term rental, when it's used as a short-term rental is two off-street parking spaces.
So say that again, please. How many?
We're asking to amend condition number four to say a total of two guests and a condition number five to say a number, maximum number of two cars.
Okay. Questions for the director, Commissioner Muller? Commissioner Muller?
Turning my mic off, excuse me.
That's all right.
Did I understand that, uh, this S U P was only for one year?
Yes, because it is a new S U P and the applicant will not be managing the property onsite. Our protocol is to do short-term rentals for one year, unlike Friendship Inn, which had an onsite manager, which is why we allowed that first S U P to be two years.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any further questions of the director? If none, I'll stand for motion. I'll need two, one on the master plan amendment and one on change of zone, in that order, please. Commissioner Muller?
Uh, make, uh, the motion to approve M P L twenty-twenty-one dash oh-two-seven, uh, with staff stipulations.
And that's the revised stipulations as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, motion's been made, uh, by Commissioner Muller to approve the master plan amendment subject to staff stipulations in addition to the, uh, changes that were just made here at this meeting. Uh, is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
A second.
All right, any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller? Mohler?
Hi.
Armstrong?
I.
Yui?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment, number twenty-seven passes, five in favor and none opposed, subject to the revised staff conditions.
Thank you, okay. And then I need one for change of zone. Commissioner Muller?
Uh, uh, I would like to approve S P twenty-two-one dash zero-seven-six with staff stipulations and everything else we discussed tonight.
That would be cha- that would be change of zone application.
I'm sorry, C O Z twenty-two-one dash oh-four-six.
Thank you.
Dash stipulations.
Including the revisions.
Including the revisions.
All right, thank you. Uh, is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion for approval on the change of zone? Thank you, roll call, please.
Miller?
I.
Mohler?
Hi.
Armstrong? Commissioner Armstrong?
I.
Yui?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone number forty-six passes, five in favor and none opposed, subject to the staff's revised conditions.
Thank you.
We need S P seventy-six.
I'm sorry?
Special use permit seventy-six goes with this, too.
I'm sorry. All right, now I need one for the special use permit. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I omitted that one. Commissioner Muller? Commissioner Muller?
Yeah, I, I will make a motion to approve that, but I flipped my screen and lost my numbers with stack stipulations and everything we discussed tonight.
Okay, motion to approve the special, special use permit associated with this case, uh, in accordance with the staff stipulations, including the revised ones offered at tonight's meeting made by Commissioner Muller. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
That is.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
I.
Mohler?
Hi.
Armstrong?
I.
Yui?
I.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P seventy-six for one year, subject to the revised conditions of the staff passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January sixth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners, all three cases. So good luck to you. Uh, and on that note, we are going to take a five-minute break. I apologize to everybody for the delays, but, uh, we've got a long agenda, but we need a five-minute break, and we'll get everybody back and we'll try to wrap up this agenda very shortly. So we'll see you back in five minutes. As soon as Janet gets back, we'll reconvene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm now ready.
All right, we have everybody else back. Don't see Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Muller's back, okay? There we go. Okay, we will reconvene the meeting. I appreciate everyone's patience, uh, while we get through a very, very lengthy agenda. So Janet, would you go ahead and call the next case, please?
Yes, the next application is change of zone, C O Z twenty-two-one dash zero-four-nine. Teresa Christopher, change of zone from R one, single-family district to A G Agriculture District for agricultural purposes at two thousand South Forty-Ninth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, inference of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Christopher, I've got you queued up to speak. If you go ahead and give us your name and address, please tell us about your project.
My name's Teresa Christopher, two thousand South Forty-Ninth Street, Kansas City, Kansas. And basically, what we'd like to do is change the zoning back to agricultural, which it was for several years when my dad farmed the property. So, we're gonna, I would like to pick up where he left off. Much of the ground here is wooded area. There's a lot of rocks. It's called flat rock acres for a reason. So, there's a lot of uneven terrain and a lot of rocks. So, the plantable area is really a kind of a small area up on the south side of the property where dad had cleared the land. He planted several fruit trees. Of course, most of those are, are gone by this point. We lost the last two peach trees to a storm last year and the last percentage tree earlier this year to a storm. But there's still a couple of fruit trees. Pear trees on the property is still blooming. We have since planted fruit trees, blackberries and various other plants in that sunny section back there in the back. We do not want to take down the rest of the trees or clear the property of the other tree areas because it's, it's a good place for animal habitat. We have foxes, deer, rabbits. Just about, you know, wolves, any, anything you can imagine around here and, you know, even bobcats. And actually, we'd like to to leave the wooded area for that. I would be interested in how to improve the tree stand and that was mentioned in the comments from, from the planning committee. But but basically, we want to be able to supplement our social security income with jams and jellies and selling fruit to local markets and anyway, I think that the property is well-suited for that. Alright, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Saying none, we'll go to the director and get his comments. Director Hand.
Mr. Chair, this is gonna hand Director Plan and Urban Design. Again, this is a change of zone from our one to AG agricultural district. Property is just under ten acres, so it does meet the minimum acreage requirement for an AG zone property. This is in, this is in the Turner area. And again, it's sort of a larger parcel within some larger parcels, but also again, more traditional single-family neighborhoods around its perimeter. You can see some pictures of the property here as I scroll through them really quick. The only can, primary condition of approval to note is related to the driveway. We're asking that the applicant meet the current UG standards for driveway aprons, which is basically to have a driveway pad back to the property line of concrete. And we do know because there's a couple of conversations happening. So, as, as really just as a caveat to future uses of the property under agricultural zone, there are provisions in the code that allow you to do farm stands on your property as of right. If, if anything were to move into the production of wine on the property, that will require its own special use permits. So, just be cognizant in the future moving forward as you diversify what you want to do on the on the property, that some of those uses may require their own special use permits. We add that in there just as a note to the applicant. There's some old NOVs on the property that's unrelated to this case. We did receive a letter of support. We've received no letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Armstrong?
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Sorry, it was a question. I was just going to make a motion.
I'm, okay. One moment, please. I'm gonna go back to the applicant. Ms. Christopher, did you need to make a comment?
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask about the apron. So, am I understanding that we have to pave forty feet into the property? Is that the requirement?
No.
Okay.
Requirement is to, to, within the public right-of-way, so up to your property line. It should be about ten feet. Probably up to your gate, maybe, but depends on where you're gated. I don't exactly know where your property line is. The, the public works right-of-way permit will, will give you all the standards and we can work with you and connect you with the right people. I can I believe your case planner was Byron Toy. I think we can follow up with you tomorrow accordingly.
Great, I appreciate that.
Any further questions for the director? Okay, Commissioner Muller, you had your hand up?
That was, I was simply going to follow the motion.
Okay, we don't have one yet. Does anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Armstrong?
I move to approve change of zone twenty-two-one dash zero forty-nine, subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Thank you. Motion is for approval. Is that a second, Commissioner Muller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Saying none, roll call.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Yui?
Aye.
John, Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application, subject to the staff's conditions, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January sixth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our last change of zone is number COZ twenty-two-one dash zero five-two. Cole Anderson with Betis Asphalt and Construction Incorporated. Change of zone previously approved to MP three to revise the hours of operation condition of approval of change of zone COZ twenty-two-one dash zero one-eight at sixteen twenty-five South Eighty-Sixth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachment stated December thirteen, twenty-twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in purgance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Mr. Anderson, I've got you queued up to speak, but I also have a Mr. Eckert who is also asked to speak. Is he gonna be representing you? Mr. Anderson or Mr. Eckert? Unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, my name's Rich Eckert. I'm General Counsel for the Betis Companies. I do have Cole Anderson sitting here as well.
Okay, alright, I've got you both queued up, but you're coming up under Mr. Anderson's. That, that's fine. Either way, go ahead. Just go ahead and give me your name and address and, and we'll go from there.
Rich Eckert, eighteen-hundred Northwest Brickyard, Topeka, Kansas, six-six-six-one-eight.
Thank you.
So.
Go ahead, tell us about your project.
This matter was in front of the planning commission back in September. So, I don't want to repeat everything from A to Z. Obviously, we've been here a long time, so I'm not going to do that. But if anybody has any questions, I would be glad to, to cover that material again. When we got to the Board of County Commissioners, we had, of course, planning staff approval. And we had a protest petition filed against us. The protest petition encompassed a much larger area than we actually were rezoning. So, during that hearing, we got a seven-two vote, which wasn't enough. But then they made a, a, a motion after that about changing our operating hours from seven to five with a hard end at five PM. And that got the nine-o vote and, and on we went. And we didn't really have a chance to have a discussion about that. So, we consulted with planning staff and to figure out the best way to have that conversation and they just decided that we should start over again and that's what we're doing. For the vast majority of the time, we are fine with a seven AM to five PM operating hours, although we would note that our competitors, and there's one right across the road from K thirty-two, would not be subject to that restriction. It would only be us. Back in twenty-nineteen, we had a, a night job on K thirty-two right in front of our plant. It's a K-dot job and K-dot mandated that it be performed at night. In the two years, three years since then, three construction years, there's been no other night jobs. So, I don't want to portray this like we're going to be immediately doing night jobs. We actually don't want to do night jobs. It's hard to get our people to do them and I don't blame them. We all don't even want to be here at ten-twenty-one to discuss this. But it, it's, it's, it's not something we want to do, but K-dot every now and then mandates these jobs to be performed at night. And we would like to have the ability to bid on those as a part of our economic feasibility study. Even though a, a night job might not happen in a construction year, twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three, those jobs are usually big enough that if it does happen in twenty-twenty-three, it's vital to make this site a success. And so, this is our, our, we want to come to Wyandotte County. We want to be there very badly. We think it's a a, a great market for what we do. We, there's a real need for our product there. And, but we do need this ability occasionally to be able to do night work.
Okay, anything else?
Not unless there's any other questions. We have visited extensively with our neighbor to the south, which we had not done previously. And we do believe that we have reached an accommodation with Jason Bailey and his household to make life better for him. He didn't have a good understanding and it's, and it's partly our fault for not reaching out, but we have reached out. And we do believe we have his cooperation going forward.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand at this time. I'm seeing none, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is gonna hand Director Plan and Urban Design. Again, as the applicant mentioned, this was previously approved conditionally. One of those conditions was hours of operation. The applicant is seeking to change that single condition accordingly to allow for twenty-four-hour operation with with twenty-four-hour notice to the immediate neighborhood. Not too dissimilar from a similar condition we've added, we added to when a similar concern arise around the Woodlands project, redevelopment project into industrial, into an industrial park. Again, this is in sort of the river area, just off Cod Drive. We've, we've maintained and carried over and again, aren't hearing it's specific to that one condition. So, all the other conditions we previously worked through as it relates to this project are, are still in there. It's still part of their project. They have done some enhanced landscaping, screened to their neighbor to the south and west as just noted by the applicant. With that change, nothing else has changed on the project other than the request for hours of operation. They do plan to move on some office workers here, so it would be a full-time site. We are making them comply with the commercial design guidelines and other enhancements along Ruby Avenue. We've received no letters of support or opposition. There are no notices of violations associated with this property. Staff recommends approval.
Questions for staff? Saying none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Muller?
Make a motion to approve COZ twenty-two-one dash oh-five-two with staff stipulations and comments.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you. And is that a second by Commissioner Jones?
That is a second.
Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Yui?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone application fifty-two, subject to the conditions of staff passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again January sixth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, we are now going to move on to our special use permits. The first one is SP twenty-two-one dash zero five-nine, special use permit to keep approximately fifty chickens at forty-six twenty-one Swartz Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December thirteen, twenty-twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in purgance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Yes, Mortesa Gurabi, are you in the audience? I need you to raise your hand so I can call on you. Thank you. Okay, I've got you unmuted. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project. I'm sorry, go ahead and unmute yourself. Mortesa, I need you to unmute yourself. I'm sorry, I said that I did it, but I need you to do that. I've got you queued up to speak, though. I just need you to hit the unmute button, please. There's no way for us to do it, is there, Janet?
We can only ask them to unmute.
Right, I've done that.
And I, I clicked on the ask to unmute button, but.
Yeah, I have too. I need you to unmute yourself so we can hear you.
Mr. Chair, the staff planner has had, on occasion, had to use a translator for this case. I can introduce if you like me to.
Go ahead.
Again, this is gonna hand Director Plan and Urban Design. What's before you tonight is a special use permit for specifically chickens over what is allowed, what's allowed by right is six six fowl on the property. The applicant had originally asked for fifty. Staff did an extensive site visit with the applicant. They are a new sort of chicken farmer, if you will. And our staff planner has some experience with raising chickens. So, we worked quite a bit with this applicant to get them up to speed upon a second site visit.
Here we go. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, we were just kind of hearing about your case. Can you tell us what you want to do here?
Yeah, I was gonna see if I can get the permit to keep like twenty, thirty chickens. My property, we have like over close to eight-acre land. We have a lot of fruit trees. And we need the chicken for eggs and the manure for fertilizing our our fruit trees.
Okay, tell me your name again.
It's Mortesa Gurabi.
And you live at forty-six twenty-one Swartz Road, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one-oh-six?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And how many chickens are you wanting to have?
Probably between twenty to thirty. I'll be happy with that.
Twenty to thirty, and what about roosters?
No rooster. We, we're gonna, we are not gonna keep no rooster.
No roosters?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all.
That's all, okay. Gunnar, was there anything that you wanted to add?
About this time.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Okay, saying none, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is gonna hand Director Plan and Urban Design. Again, staff did an initial site visit and saw quite a few issues with the property, worked with the applicant to make those improvements. Upon revisiting the site a week or two ago, I think, we did notice progress being made. So, we asked the Conservation District to come back out to the site and, and, and reassess the property. Conservation District comments are included in the staff report. Conservation District and staff are recommending only twenty chickens be allowed. Again, there's a condition of approval, really as a reminder because it is the code that no roosters are allowed. We believe the applicant has worked with us and, and has continued to work with us to improve the property to allow this use and And we've received no letters of support nor opposition. There are quite a few notices of violation on the property. Again, those are part of what's being cleaned up as the progress that we saw on the site between the first and the second site, approved, site visit, staff recommends approval for two years.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Muller?
Make a motion to approve SB twenty twenty-one dash zero five nine with staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, and is that a second Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. In, I'm sorry, any discussion on that motion for approval? And I'm sorry, Gunner, was that for twenty?
Correct, twenty chickens.
Twenty chickens, no rooster. Sorry, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP fifty-nine for twenty chickens for two years and the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gharabi, this will be heard once again January sixth before the Board of County Commissioners at seven PM, okay?
Okay.
All right, good luck to you. Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-one dash zero seven one. Jessica Betts, special use permit for short-term rental at seven forty-nine Locust Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated December thirteen, twenty twenty-one, the application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Betts, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, everybody, for being here. My name is Jess Betts. I'm the property owner of seven four-nine Locust Street in Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero three. And my, I'm just doing a motion to approve a special use permit, simply just to allow me to market my property to tenants to reside in the house for less than thirty days. So this house was originally purchased by my dad in July of twenty nineteen with the intent for it to be my property. I ended up buying it from him last December. So I've owned it for about a year now. And when we first bought the house, it was in foreclosure. And it had been sitting vacant for over a year, was on the MLS for well over ninety days, and it was in really, really bad shape. So we had to do a total gut job on this. It has all new electrical, new roof, new siding, all new plumbing, flooring, paint, I mean, absolutely everything in this house is brand new except for the HVAC and water heater. So we, we ended up doing all this work ourselves and I ended up moving into the property while it was still under construction, so I ended up staying there for almost two years. With all that being said, a couple months ago, I found out I was going to, to have to relocate to Texas. And after living in that beautiful house for almost two years and just after all the work that, that I had done and, and all the bonding time I got to have with my father, I just could not bring myself to sell it. So I basically was forced with, with two options, and that basically was to either rent it out as a short-term rental or rent it to a long-term tenant. And so I did a ton of research regarding this. And, and after everything that I've, I've looked at, I decided that a, a short-term rental is, is the way that I'm going to have to go just simply based on the fact that a long-term rental is just too risky. There's a large amount of risk with long-term tenants because with short-term tenants, there's, there's going to be someone in the property that I trust every single week to check on it and to clean it and perform any necessary maintenance, whereas with a long-term tenant, we can go years sometimes without even stepping foot on the property. And tenants can be spilling things on the carpets, destroying appliances, clogging drains. You know, their pets can be tearing things up, and we just have no idea that that's even going on. And then when you're moved out, obviously you're forced to do thousands of dollars of repairs. And with short-term rentals, there's a significantly larger amount of coverage with insurance and the various short-term rental platforms. So if anything gets damaged at all, I'm covered. And with long-term tenants, I'm not. And also, my, my parents have been landlords for over twenty years now. And just after hearing their experiences with it, I really just don't want to take the risk on. In those twenty years, they've, they've had a hoarder tenant who abandoned the property and left all of her stuff there. They've had to deal with two evictions. They had a tenant whose utilities were turned off and the pipes burst. And they currently have a tenant there who's three months behind on rent. So just with all the horror stories that I've heard and all the moratoriums that are currently going on, I, I just think this is just simply too big of a risk for me to take on a long-term tenant. And COVID is definitely not over, so these moratoriums can definitely continue to happen. And on top of that, just from the research I've done, there's an abundance of evidence that short-term rental guests are typically much higher quality tenants compared to those that are long-term. I guess just for the fact being when you're staying somewhere for a short amount of time and you're aware of the fact that, that you're immediately going to be charged for any damages that incur, people tend to act a little bit more appropriately, I find. So, and, and also with, with short-term tenants, we're able to, to kick them out right away. Whereas with long-term tenants, you just simply aren't allowed to do that. So with all that being said, I do also have my Alex Repschel on this call here. He is the owner of the management company that's going to be taking over the property and handling the day-to-day for me. So I was hoping if, if we could possibly unmute him and just let him go over a couple potential.
His name is Alexander Repschel?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi, thanks for having us here today. My name is Alex. I'm the owner of Owl Stays LLC. And Jess Betts reached out to me to manage her property. So I went over some of the concerns, the factors to be considered. And the top one that I want to talk about is the neighborhood character. So this is definitely our top priority. And we intend to fit right into the neighborhood. We've designed a marketing plan and pricing strategy to attract young families. We've seen success in our strategy with our units in Overland Park, and we're confident with this property. Upon approval, a member of our team will be introducing themselves to some of the neighbors immediately adjacent to the house. We did host a, a neighborhood meeting, but we didn't get any participants. So we'll just send one of our team members over there and just, our goal is to establish an easy method of communication. I believe communication solves a lot of problems before they become problems, and I intend to deliver on this problem or on this promise. So aside from that, we have controls in place for traffic, parking concerns, noise, trash, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant or their property manager? Okay, no questions. So we're going to go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Keith Reese. Go ahead and unmute yours. There you go.
How was everyone tonight?
We're getting tired.
Be brief. Ms. Betts has been a very responsible owner of the house.
What's your address, Mr. Reese?
Seven six eight Locust.
Thank you.
Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh three. She has done what she has stated, which is to resurrect this piece of property from the dregs of vacancy and has proved to be an excellent addition to the neighborhood. I will be sorry to see her go. But I trust her judgment and perhaps that of her property owner to, to maintain the neighborhood quality and character.
Okay.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Han, and we will get his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is going to hand Director Plan and Urban Design. Again, we have another short-term rental. This one is not, is in the Rosedale area, but it is not in the specific project area for the Rosedale area master plan. You can see the site pictured here, a couple other pictures accordingly. Right now, we have some conditions on, to the approval related to a guest max of six and a cars max off-street parking of three. The only other condition of approval that we're asking for is to improve the driveway apron to UG standards. It's currently kind of broken asphalt gravelish. Again, the standard requirement for an apron off of a public right-of-way is concrete. With that, there are old NOBs on the property not related to this case. We received no letters in opposition nor support. We recommend approval for one year.
Okay, questions for the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Muller?
I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to make a comment on what this young lady and her father have done because I've watched it for the last eighteen months and I watched them do it by hand. And I've been a landlord for seventeen years, but acquitted for the exact reason that she's stating. And so I wholeheartedly would like to approve SP twenty twenty-one dash zero seven one with staff stipulations and comments.
All right, thank you. Is that a second Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval for one year? Seeing none, roll call please.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP seventy-one for one year, subject to the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January sixth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck to you.
Our next special use permit is SP twenty twenty-one dash zero seven three. Daniel Castillo with Manor Records, special use permit for a drinking establishment in a record store at four oh one North Sixth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated December thirteen, twenty twenty-one, the application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices for property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Castillo, are you in the audience? I need you to raise your hand so I can recognize you. Okay, go ahead, please. Unmute yourself. Give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Daniel Castillo, two oh four Orchard Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero one.
Tell us about what you'd like to do tonight.
So I am asking for a special use permit for the sale of alcohol at four oh one North Sixth Street. We're hoping to open a nonprofit bar and record store that could benefit the neighborhood. All all profits made by the nonprofit would go toward helping out with some trash cans, lights and sidewalk restructuring in the neighborhood.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Also, record sales that are sold at the property will go toward helping local musicians.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience tonight want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Raise your hand, please. I'm seeing none, so we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Better hand, Director Plan and Urban Design. Again, this case is for an SUP for a bar at, in the central area master plan area. It's in the Strawberry Hill neighborhood just off Sixth Normal, right on the corner, I should say, Sixth Normal. There had been some conversation with the applicant on whether there would or would not be live entertainment included in the bar. That has been, that is not going to happen. So if live entertainment were ever to be proposed at Bar in the future, they'd have to either come back and amend or add a special use permit accordingly. There is some issues with this block. You can kind of see it from how it is here. A lot of the sites are, a lot of the parcels along Sixth Street are constrained in terms of area. Their footprints are pretty much the size of their parcels, so there's very limited place to manage things like trash enclosures and things of that nature. If you're familiar with the block, there's a couple of trash bins sitting on the public right-of-way, which is not allowed. And so we've asked the applicant to try to figure out something for the block, although it's a condition of approval. I think we're willing to work with them to figure that out because it's an issue that was, has been raised by the neighborhood in general. But with that, we've received no letters of support, no opposition. There's some old NOBs before this property was renovated by its property owner a couple of years ago. So not related to this case in any way, shape or form. Staff recommends approval for two years.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion.
I had a question. Okay, yeah. Ten okay, four oh one, or what do I, two, two oh four Orchard Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero one. I thought we pushed it a month to include an entertainment license, Gunner.
I thought it got removed. Hold on one second.
Sure.
Can you remember what we noticed at?
Yes, I do. And I published it in the news.
This is one of those moments when I wish I had one of those banners that said, "Technical difficulties, please stand by."
Mr. Chair, I think there was a miscommunication with staff. Staff had told us that, that, that the live entertainment, while discussed, had been removed. It was not noticed, so it does not, it cannot be heard tonight. Although when you read the conditions of approval, there are clearly conditions of approval here related to live entertainment. So, Mr. Castillo, we could push it another month, re-notice it and get live entertainment, or you can come back for live entertainment later. I think it's your choice at this point.
Director Han, if we hold this over, it will not go until the February meeting because the publications for January have already been sent to the newspaper and we're past the deadline.
I guess I would like to go forward without the entertainment.
So go ahead and get you going, sir, and then we'll, we'll work on getting you the live entertainment piece at a later date. Is that acceptable, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about the.
Apologize for that.
All good.
All right, thank you. So we have before us the case that was presented by the applicant minus live entertainment and conditions given to us by the director. Any, let's go with a motion. Commissioner Miller?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I please interrupt again? Okay, so I'm going to backtrack a little bit. The original notice that I published in the newspaper was for a drinking establishment. And that was supposed to go, I believe, in the November meeting, and we held it over. And I just found that I And I just found that I republished it on November eighteenth for a drinking establishment and live entertainment. So even though the agenda says this, because we were told something different in-house, we still could move forward with the live entertainment because it has been noticed for it.
Mister Chair, I would add the conditions of approval, approval related to entertainment are some standard conditions that we've talked about previously in regards to illumination coming outside of the building. Um, that needs to be screened and we also have a condition here that all entertainment must cease at one A M.
What about I D readers and all those kinds of things?
Those are in our standard conditions.
All right. So what do you, what do, what do we have before us before we get ready to make a motion?
Before you, you have an application for S, a special use permit for a bar and live entertainment.
And, and we're good with that. We can move, we can move forward with that.
Yep.
Wow, she sure saved you on that one, didn't she?
Thank you, Janet.
It's true what she said when she started this, this conversation. She does run the show down there. Okay, so we're back. Commissioner Miller, if you're if you've been paying attention to where we're at right now, do you want to make a motion?
Well, but for pointed clarification before that, she also runs this board and you are not actually the chairman of this. Just because I, Janet, Janet had my back before the meeting for everyone watching.
Oops, I'm sorry. Hit the mute button on you, Commissioner Miller. There you go.
Move to approve, uh, subject to staff stipulations for the drinking establishment and live entertainment.
Okay, motion to approve by that guy that was speaking earlier. Second, is that you, Mister Muller, Commissioner Muller? Okay, thank you. Motion for approval for the drinking establishment and live entertainment was made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Ewing.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P seventy three for two years with this conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Okay, Mister Castillo, this will be heard once again, January twenty sixth before the Board of County Commissioners. We thank you for your patience and for waking us up tonight.
Yes, thank you.
All right, good luck.
Mister Chairman, our next special use permit is S P twenty twenty one dash zero seven five. Renewal of a Pearl A King renewal of a special use permit. S P dash twenty nineteen dash seventy four, which expired September twenty sixth, twenty twenty one for a restaurant and drinking establishment with live entertainment at eight twelve South twelfth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated December thirteen, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in appearance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind out echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No. Thank you. Ms. King, I've got you ready to speak. So if you go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Um, good evening. My name is Pearl King. My address is ten thousand four Northwest Seventy First Street, Kansas City, Missouri, six, four, one, five, two. I'm here representing the owner and applicant Manhattan Bar and Grill, Martha Medina. This is a renewal. It's actually a second renewal. The first special use permit they got was just for one year. Had some more, we had agreed to some more restrictive conditions since it was our first one. We came back a year later and got approval for two years and we're here to renew again. I went over everything in the draft report and the final staff report. And I really don't have much to add to it. I do have a couple of questions. I realize it's extremely late. I know I'm way past my bedtime, so I will be as brief as possible. On the staff recommendations, number two and five, I think those, I just want to clarify, clarification that those are referencing the same thing and that screening that's along that west side that's next to the duplex. I know that I, I believe if I understand the draft report and the final report correctly, that that screening wasn't a condition two years ago when we got the last special use permit. And it wasn't real clear to us if that was something that we needed to do until I saw the final conditions. So we're going to plant, I believe, trees and shrubs there after we get a list from planning. What will be acceptable to put there? If that's the only screening issues, I, I don't think that's a problem to take care of. The only other thing would be item condition number ten on the entertainment ceasing at one A M. And we were just curious if there had been a change because we have always closed it to had our entertainment over by one thirty and there hasn't ever been a problem with getting everybody out. There hasn't been any complaints about the, the noise or the time. So pulling the, the time back thirty minutes to one A M seemed kind of punitive to us. And so we wanted to know if that could be changed to one thirty or left at one thirty like it has been in the past. Um, other than that, they have security two. All the time they have entertainment and four on Friday nights. And whenever they think they're going to have a closer to full crowd. So they actually have security and access is what's recommended under the ordinance. Like I said, there hasn't been any problems. They've been really good about improving the property, working with their neighbors and being proactive and communicating. And that's really alleviated any, any problems that have happened at that property with the prior owners. So unless there's any questions, I'll leave it at that.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Jones.
Uh, in fairness to the other petitioners, the questions that we've asked, ma'am, can I ask you why the request to renew the permit is so late? It expired in September, so it's more than two and a half, about two and a half months late.
Um, that was really a misunderstanding by the applicant. They didn't realize what happened during the, the pandemic situation. The state actually extended some of the licensing. And they were under the wrong assumption that that extension also applied to their city licensing. So that delay, I, I'm just explaining that I'm not trying to make an excuse, but that was the reason for the delay. Um, it was just a wrong assumption on their part of what the expiration was.
Okay, so going forward, they do understand that it's your responsibility, their responsibility to renew this in a timely manner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? And I just, I want to clarify, I guess since we're, we're on the subject of misunderstandings, the, again, or maybe you can help me with this. The landscape screening was a part of the original approval two years ago and was not done. Is that correct?
Uh, no, the, my understanding is what they're asking to be done now on the west side. And if I apologize that I can't get to that part of the
Well, hang on just a second. My question is for the director.
Oh, okay.
Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Urban Design. Yes, it was communicated that staff reviewed the old staff reports and there was a conversation about screening to that residential use directly to their west.
Okay, so it was part of the original approval two years ago and it was not completed.
I believe it was the initial, yes.
The initial one, which was how long ago?
Three years ago.
Three years ago? Okay.
They got a one, a two, and now they're asking for another two.
Okay, and so what, what do we have in the way of compliance? Course to make sure that it actually happens this time since it hasn't been done in the last three years.
We have the next S, we have this and the next S U P renewal and we also are implementing. Uh, I mentioned a previous, in a previous case, another hire, we, we are, we've been authorized to hire another zoning enforcement specialist. One of our two zoning enforcement specialists will focus on conditions of approval or entitlement such as this, so we will be focusing on that starting in twenty twenty two.
So if it's approved, is there a stipulation that can be added that if the, the screening requirement isn't met within six months that the S U P is pulled?
Standard protocol is that all conditions of approval are met within six months of an approval.
All right, all right, thank you.
So we'll start our checks for all of twenty twenty. What we're planning on doing is starting all of our reviews of all twenty twenty one cases in June of twenty twenty two and the expectation being all of them will have more than enough time to comply when we start that review cycle with this new position.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Muller?
Uh, Gunner, isn't it normally two goes to five and then to ten? Shouldn't this be for a five year extension?
Um, the, your approval for S U Ps, yes, has the, has the opportunity to go from two, five to ten, but only if requested and if staff agrees. So we were more comfortable with the two, but um, I think the applicant could ask for five right now and you guys can make that motion if you see fit.
And I would feel more comfortable with five if the applicant complied with the original requests that were made. So I'm not inclined to, to go any further than, than what we're talking about tonight, given the, given their non-compliance up to this point and the fact that they're making application late. Just my statement. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience, any?
Uh, can I say something?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think there's a misunderstanding about, and you're saying that we were non-compliant about this screening, but it even says, I mean, we put in everything that they told us to do. And even under the factors to be considered in the report on number three, it says it should be noted, however, that the conditions regarding the screening from adjacent properties had not been after S P twenty nineteen seventy four had been approved. And that was unclear to me and to us. And I even asked and it can be seen in my report, my reply back and my response that it mentions conditions regarding screening from adjacent properties. It is unclear to us if this is additional screening required. We never were told we were not compliant. That was the two trees that were in front of the property and we've actually replaced those. We were never told about that other screening. And so I, I kind of feel like we're being told that we were non-compliant, but we were. I, I agree, we were late asking for, you know, filing our application for the renewal. I would have loved to request it five years, didn't know that we were able to even do that. But honestly, I don't feel this is correct, saying that we were in non-compliance. I mean, we were never asked to do that in, at the time of our other special use permits.
We'll, we'll let the director to, to go into that during his comment, but I, I appreciate yours. So we're going to go to the audience now. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Got one hand up for Larry Spring.
Hello.
Hello, Mister Frank. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Larry Spring, eleven eleven Pennsylvania, Kansas City, Kansas.
Uh huh.
Um, so myself and several other residents around the area were opposed to this project originally three years ago. We brought to the council's concern, three concerns of ours, basically which were parking, trash and noise. None of these concerns have really been, been dealt with in any way, shape or form. First and foremost, it was parking. We as residents were concerned about the parking issues because at the time of the application, our point was that they did not comply with current codes. And they still do not comply with current codes and that they do not have enough parking for their occupancy. So what has happened since then in the last three years of their operation is we have people blocking our driveways, blocking entrance ways to other, other streets. And the worst part of it is we've got people parking in a vacant lot across the street en masse and turning it into a party zone. There's no security over there. Their security stays across the street. Everyone has to walk across Osage from this vacant lot that is not paved. It is not in any way a lot for parking, nor should it be allowed. It's not, does not meet any sort of codes for that. It was a grass lot. It's no longer a grass lot. It's now almost completely gravel and broken glass. So that's concern one. Concern two is, is trash was all of our concerns. That, that happens all up and down the street. I know that myself and several other residents have asked them to pick up trash every morning. That doesn't happen. It happens occasionally. But by the time it usually gets cleaned up, half the bottles are broken. They're all beer bottles, beer cans. Don't know if they're coming out of the bar or coming with the people attending the bar. Not really to the point, but it's all happening. Noise, which is part of the live music, which is what this permit is regarding, really has been a sum of an issue with, with people attending, but mostly when the door gets opened and closed, the music comes blaring out and can be heard for blocks. So I don't know if there's any sort of baffle that could be done inside the building for that, but that would be very helpful. So I guess my question is, is there any way that this can be, that, that it can be stipulated that they fix some of these issues, especially the parking issue? If, if they would be willing to do it, I'm sure they could buy that lot, which I don't think they own. I don't know if the owner knows they parked there. They may have an agreement with him. But it needs to be paved. It needs to be brought up to code. It ideally would have lighting and security so that it doesn't turn into an outdoor party zone. Thank you for your time. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to Manhattan Bar and Grill. Could you please give us your name and address, please?
Hello, good, good afternoon. I know it's late. I'm Uriel Medina. My mom is the owner of Manhattan Bar and Grill and
What's the address there?
Uh, eight, one, two, South Twelfth Street, Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay.
Um, we just had a couple comments based on Mister, I don't, Mister Larry's. Um, we do our best to keep the trash minimal. We have security every weekend from, from, from Friday to Sunday in excess. We even have two off-duty officers. And he's saying that the parking lot turns into a, a party lot, but I mean, everybody just parks their car and comes and comes inside, you know? All of our neighbors around here, they tell us that they're very happy that business is good, that we fixed the place up, that it doesn't look like how it used to. That's, that's all I wanted to add. I'm sorry, uh, my mom asked me to stay also that we pick up all the trash. Usually nobody parks on Pennsylvania Street. Everybody parks in front and across the street. So, I mean, that's
They're parking across the street in the lot that was discussed by Mister Spring?
Yeah, and we have a parking variance for the street. So there is, I believe that there's enough parking.
Parking variance, all right, we'll address that with the director. And what about any type of agreement with the owner of the lot across the street that your patrons are parking in?
We have tried to purchase it, but the, the gentleman does not want to sell it.
And he's aware that people are parking there?
Yes, he is.
And he's okay with that?
He has, he has never complained or, I mean, we're open every He has, he has never complained or, I mean, we're open every day except Tuesday. So if he had a problem, I'm sure he could come up here voice his, his problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else, uh huh, anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han for his comment. I'm sorry. First of all, I want to go back. Well, no, go ahead. I think it's already been addressed. So go ahead and address, if you would please, a possible parking variance on file?
There is a parking variance on file.
There is. Okay.
Again, my name's Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Related to this case, again, it's the second renewal, potentially requesting their second renewal, which would be their third approval of this special use permit. The previous special use permit did include a condition that parking must, parking must be screened from adjacent streets, but must be screened. So we got that. We confirmed that with past staff reports and letters of approval. That's in the code. We're simply asking that the parking be screened from adjacent view. We're not trying to be punitive in any way, shape or form. Staff would be amenable to change the end of live entertainment to 1:30 from 1 o'clock. We usually been following the 1 o'clock model because it's within the code, not for C3 zones as this, but for commercial zones adjacent to residential uses, which this is. So we've been trying to adhere to that as a condition of approval above and beyond the code requirement. But again, if, if, if the commission wanted to, they could, they could increase that to 1:30. We do have standard conditions that redress, you know, illumination getting from the building related to live entertainment as well as noise. We do ask that the doors be kept closed, but this is a small building with, with, with the front door. And when the front door opens from people going in and out, the music pours out. Again, I'm not sure if there's something interior to that. As the, the front door is right on the property line adjacent to the sidewalk. It's a zero lot. This is a zero setback building. Which is typical in Armadale for commercial structures. So again, it's code requirement. It's a property code issue to keep your, keep your property clean of debris and, and other, and other trash. So we could add that as a condition of approval as well. That would just be reaffirming existing code and other, and other property maintenance requirements accordingly. There have been no notices of violation on this property. We've received no letters of support other than the comments from the neighbor this evening. We've received nothing in writing in opposition. Staff recommends approval for two years.
All right. Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Correct. Go, I'm sorry. Yes, please. Go ahead.
Gunner, is it too late for Ms. King to ask for five years?
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resign. And again, I apologize, Commissioner Muller. I hit the wrong button. I may have muted you. So I apologize. It is not too late for you to make that motion.
Commissioner Miller?
I was just going to second. I think Muller was going to try to make the motion, but
I, I, I am. I'm just fumbling around. I was, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 2021 dash 075 for five years with staff stipulations and comments.
Second.
Motion has been made for approval for five years. Paid by Commissioner Muller, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, a point of clarification from Mr. Muller's motion. Are we keeping the 1 o'clock end of live entertainment or do you want to change that as well?
If, if, if 1:30 has been in place, I'd like to keep it in place.
Okay. So the motion has been not amended, but I guess restated to, to keep the hours, the operating hours at 1:30, the closing hours at 1:30. Is that acceptable to you, Commissioner Miller?
I believe closing hour just two, it's the live entertainment at 1:30. But yes, but Gunner, I would like clarification on that at some point in the future.
Let's get it now. Cause I don't know what we're, what we're talking about.
No, I don't, I don't mean on the bars, but we've had various discussions on bars recently of differences of one, 1:32. Do we have an ordinance that says if there's live, live entertainment, it's got to be one, 1:30 or can we, do we have the ability to leave mobile to? That's not for this, but I just mean in the future, I'd like clarification on that. But my second's fine.
So the live entertainment, everything can run until 1:30. Is that correct? Cause that's, that's the motion that's being made. Okay.
Yes.
And that's permissible to do that, Gunner?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? I guess the only thing I would like to see Gunner, is I would like to see some follow-up on this case to make sure that the conditions are met on this particular case within the six months that's required by the code. I don't want to be discussing this two years from now to find out. Well, we won't, I guess five years. So we won't see this again for five years. I want to make sure that what's supposed to get done this time actually does get done this time.
Understood.
Any further discussion on this case, on the other's motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Chairman, before I take the roll call, can I please just note for the record that Mr. Spring did prior to the start of the meeting tonight, send me an email in opposition with pictures showing the parking and the trash on that property. So we will include that as part of the record.
All right. Thank you.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Huey?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to recommend approval of SP 75 for five years, subject to the revised conditions. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Hey, this will be heard once again, January 6th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2021 dash 082. Kevin Bentley with Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas. Special use permit for a group home program with gardens and greenhouse for training for Shalom House and office and gardening space for new roots program at 2601 Ridge Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated December 13, 2021. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Mr. Chairman, I also received a letter in support to be read into the record if they're not on the call from CHWC in support of this application.
Okay, thank you.
Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No. Thank you, Mr. Bentley. I've got you queued up to speak. If you go ahead and give us your name and address.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. It's Commissioner Muller. I, I said yes, but we all said no so quick. I just wanted to be for the record that I did receive some communication from Sister Therese Banger regarding her support for the application.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Miller. Mr. Bentley, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Very good. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. My name is Kevin Bentley and my address is 17554 West 158th Street in Olathe 66062. As mentioned, I'm with Catholic Charities and we plan to relocate our Shalom House Transitional Housing Program as well as our new Roots Farm Training Program to this location. For some historical context, Shalom has been in operation since the 1970s, but in an area near 13th of parallel. First, it was a temporary and emergent refuge for men who were experiencing homelessness. And in 2008, Catholic Charities took over the program and we began shifting it to a transitional living program to help stabilize residents, men, and move them into permanent housing. In essence, our goal and our, and our activity serve men who would otherwise face homelessness and, and help prevent an increase in that population. The new Roots Program teaches farming skills through small garden plots at our Juniper Gardens location for participants who wish to make a career of farming. We're here because Shalom has outgrown our current facility and New Roots has been asked to move from the Juniper Gardens area based upon the plans that the, that are being made there. This property specifically, as well as Catholic Charities, are, they're uniquely situated to be able to address these deeds. The property has over 25 acres, so our farm training could be done and conducted on the site. The building is there, has been a sanitarium. It's been a nursing home and most recently a retreat center. It has 31 individual guest rooms, parking for 35 cars, a kitchen, dining, recreation, a meeting space are already there, situated perfectly for our program. We will have the ability to serve up to 60 men at the site, which is up from 24 at our previous site. We plan to ramp up slowly, not jump right to 60 because our program is designed for quality and success, not simply quantity. We have the resources and we intend to invest over $2 million to refresh and repair this property. And we have the programming and support as well as community partnerships to help the participants who are going to be a part of the program. And in the end, we will be providing full case management wraparound services for the men at Shalom and continue to partner in the continuum of care for the county to help support these individuals. With our 90% success rate in the program, we will be serving many, many more men. In closing, I'd like to offer just a few details about the program, some of which specifically address some of the comments that came up in our neighborhood meeting. Our referrals come from agencies, not people walking in off of the street. When, when we go through intake, men become residents and this is their home. There will be no 4:00 PM dinner bell calling people in the area to dinner. This, this is simply the residence for the men in our program. We do conduct background checks, mental health screenings at a full social service assessment as part of our intake to make sure that we're there to provide the needs of our men. And finally about safety, our program centers are on safety, safety of the neighborhood as well as safety of the men who live there. During the 13 years that we've run the current site near parallel, we haven't had any reported issues. And we actually have had a KCK police officer offer support and inform us that during her 20 years of patrol of that particular neighborhood, she had zero calls for the Shalom House address. We plan to have a wake staff 24/7 and with a complete security system, which will have cameras, alarms and controlled access points. With our increased security as well as the cleanup of the property and of our walking trails, we actually envision improvements to the neighborhood. Together with me this evening, we have our CEO Lauren Salidum and our Chief Mission Officer Denise Ogilvy and our Director of the Program Nelson Vowles for questions that may come up as well. Thank you very much for hearing our request.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Start with Matt Watkins. Go ahead, Matt.
Hello. Hi, this is Matt Watkins. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Board, this is a very important project for Wyandotte County. I come as a resident of Wyandotte County, but somebody who works in this sector on a daily basis with the Greater Kansas City Homeless Coalition. And as Chairman of the Kansas City, Kansas Housing Authority, I'm not speaking in either of those capacities tonight. I'm speaking in a personal capacity to just reaffirm the work that Catholic Charities does, the work that the Shalom House does and the need that we have in this community for this type of activity. And I refer you to my letter that I sent in support. If we can't, if we can't get behind this project and Catholic Charities who are the gold standard in what we're doing here in homeless, homeless work. I, I'd be scared to find another group that wants to come and do this kind of work in Wyandotte County. We need it. They're, they're raising their hand. They're offering to do this work. And we should gladly accept them and encourage them. So thank you all for your time.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Would you do me a favor, please, and just give me your address, please, for the record?
Matt Watkins, 4023 North 111th Street, Kansas City, Kansas, 66109.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll go to John Schneider's.